This is the October 16th meeting of the Yarmouth Board of Selectmen. We're reopening the meeting after an extended executive session. I'd like to ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, we'll go right to public announcements and comments. Yes, Vita?
So, one of my favorite topics. The Wall Street Journal in its October 5th edition, starting on the bottom of the first page, explains everything about the pickleball courts. Apparently, this is quite serious because it talks about a very long article about the people who started moving into an adult community, I guess a major one, north of San Francisco in California, and immediately started demanding all sorts of amenities, including the pickleball courts on which this article is basically hung, and without any regard to what the rest of the people who were already there, or some even newly moving in, what their financial situations were, what have you, just whatever it struck them as the thing that they wanted of the moment. I think it's best to describe those people who are retiring now, the Baby Boomers. Obviously, there are exceptions, but it is the first generation that grew up without ever having heard the word "no." So I think it's time for you people, when they come in here with all their, you know, ideas, and I'll be very curious to see about this green community thing, but I'm talking about things like a man who just landed here from New York and immediately had a petitioned article about circumscribing the use of guns, I guess it was. Then we have the stretch code. Then we have the sanctuary city.
Vita, is there something that our board should address?
Yeah, I'm asking you to please rein in some of these projects because, okay, some of the petitioned articles you can't do anything about, but some of these green communities, I'll be very curious to see what goes on there.
Okay.
All of them end up costing money, and it's always being done for everybody's good, you know. If people want to do some of these, follow some of these things themselves, that's fine, but don't impose these on everybody else. So I would ask you to please put a moratorium on anything that emanates from committees or boards or anything like that.
That's how our community works, Vita. A town meeting approved it, it's done. Time to move on.
What, approved what?
The green communities. It was approved by a town meeting. That's our form of government. The town meeting speaks.
Did they have any idea how much this was going to cost?
It doesn't matter, it's done.
Yep.
In the future, please. Can we start doing it? Was that a petitioned article?
No, it wasn't. And you know, you stand here and you insult our town employees, you insult our town volunteers. They work very hard. They volunteer a lot of hours. And you group them into these groups and you talk about these pickleball people. They're good people. You shouldn't stereotype people like that.
Well, as I said, my idea was seconded in that article. Now...
I'm sorry, Vita, we've had your three minutes, so I'll recognize someone else. Thank you.
I'd like to speak about a different subject.
Thank you, Vita. Vita, please sit down.
Because this is something that will be coming...
Vita, sit down.
Are we turning into a school committee now?
I'll ask someone to remove you if that is necessary. You can expect, Vita, unless you show respect for town employees and this board in particular, that you will no longer be allowed to speak if you continue that type of activity. I have repeated, Vita, listen, I have repeatedly asked for all speakers to demonstrate civility and respect for everyone. If you want our respect and willingness to allow you to speak, you must comply with that request. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak this evening? Thank you.
Hello, my name's Holly. I've been in front of you gentlemen and ladies before, and my issue is trying to see if you would all consider doing a blight ordinance in our town. I know there's some blight ordinance in Falmouth, Bourne, Barnstable, and I got quite a lot of research, newspaper articles, and I also got other ordinance from other towns such as Connecticut. Just, I would like to see if you guys would consider putting it on the agenda, just to be looked at, to see if we could form a committee and maybe put something together with all the paperwork that I've gotten together, and if we can put something together to start some kind of an ordinance. It doesn't have to be, you know, real strict, maybe something just to get it going. I know there's a lot of complaints, probably 200 or 300, on, you know, houses that have been abandoned and, you know, junk in the yards, and I feel that it affects the property value to people like myself who invested, live in this town, and put a lot of money into my house.
If I can interrupt you, Holly.
Yes.
Yes, thank you for your comments. This is a very difficult subject, as I think you know.
Yes, it is.
Someone's trash is not trash to someone else, but we do have on the agenda this evening a problem properties update.
Yep.
Our board is listening. We want to carefully move forward on this issue, so we do thank you for your comments.
Yes, and if there's any research or paperwork or anybody would be interested in later on down the road that might want to review it, I'd be glad to share it with you. So it might be helpful, and you may consider it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to address the board? Okay, seeing none, we'll move forward with an age-friendly community update.
So we're bearing gifts. Is that respectful enough, Norm?
Yes, indeed.
Yeah, so we have gifts for you guys.
As long as it's a low value, I don't think we're allowed to take anything.
It's under $1. And it was bought by the Tufts Health Plan Foundation. Is that correct?
Wonderful, wonderful. Thank you.
These are the t-shirts from the Age Friendly Team when they did the Caring Communities Workshop, and a program from when they hosted an appreciation dinner for the team that has worked so hard for four years on this project.
That I am wearing.
Yeah, here's our demonstration. Jerry, just stand up and show them the t-shirt.
And if you turn around on the back, and the front says "I'm old," and the back it says "I'm young."
All right, so, thank you for having us.
I have to ask, you haven't offended anybody with that?
Not so far, right?
Okay.
Yeah, right. We just want everybody to understand one another regardless of age. That's our only request, Tracy. And that's why the intergenerational lens was placed on the age-friendly framework to begin with. The presentation we have tonight is very wordy in the slide presentation. That was for the public's benefit to understand some of the work, but we're not going to be tedious enough to take you through it word by word. Basically, you know the history in FY '14 and '15. We were second in the state of Massachusetts to be direct members with the World Health Organization. We've been educational, we've been all about community, we've hosted world cafes, and we've asked for people to think about their imaginations with this town and what keeps them up at night. We did the surveys, we did a SWOT analysis. We're focused on transportation, housing, and caregiving for all ages. We've done some training in change and resistance. We've done some training in cross-silo collaboration in the form of intergenerational all-age dementia and abuse. We worked to set some visioning in place with some outside consulting dollars and think about the collective impact with the region and the state. And we've worked with the Cultural Center to think about our artistic side of our community. We built the regional age-friendly initiative that is underway now across Cape Cod linked to the work of the Commonwealth. We connected to our community development team, like they're telling all of the communities to do across the nation, to put the planners and the aging advocates together. We worked on caregiving workforce issues, which is still a huge concern for your community, right? What are we paying the caregivers? How do they feed their families? How can we ensure quality of care for our seniors if the workforce isn't well taken care of? We have thought about dementia and added that to our age-friendly strategic plan, and we did that with outside money to get an analysis of what that looks like for us. We've worked with the Chamber of Commerce to help the business community think about how they present to an aging person as an economic development tool for your community. We've included the students and the CCY members on our team from the very beginning, and we've talked about generational equity. We've even been ranked as a best finalist, right? We love that one, Tracy. National finalist for best intergenerational community. What a message to the rest of the country from old Cape Cod. That regional team that is being led by Barnstable County Health and Human Services is well underway, and we provided the funding for that through Tufts Health Plan Foundation. We did some mapping with our churches to look what social services look like from our nonprofit side of our community. We hosted our intergenerational Model UN just about everywhere now, including the State House, with Robin Libson from the Executive Office of Elder Affairs and Julia Seer, who is the Vice Chair, Joint Committee on Elder Affairs. We talked about housing at our summit, smart homes, building codes, and house sharing. We taught our older persons how to do house sharing. We have launched the Village Program, which empowers our volunteers to help each other in the community and form their own nonprofit, and we did that with some state seed money. We have really been committed to the ADA and Disability Commission staffing. We hosted a Caring Communities Workshop with human-centered design and learned a lot about ageism and discrimination. We participated in the walker audit and even brought a walker to the audit to ensure that we looked at the curb cuts and the puddles and the light timing when you're a person that has to use a walker. We started a transportation challenge to get people to think about alternative to cars, and we had a conceptual meeting to think about how would we upcycle the Matta Key School and/or the ground around the senior center. So from there, what did we do? We're celebrating with Governor Baker because, in our opinion, he was quite brilliant in embedding the age-friendly and dementia-friendly practices into the community compact. So all 15 towns on the Cape are now signed on, along with so many across the Commonwealth being led mostly by Massachusetts Council on Aging Directors. And what are they saying at the State House? They're saying that an age-friendly community is one that's livable for residents of all ages, inclusive of older adults and those living with dementia. Age-friendly communities strive to be equitable and accessible with walkable streets, housing, and transportation options, access to services, and opportunities for residents to participate in community activities. So when we look through the list of best practices, we can do some checks already. Yeah, we have convened the leaders. Yes, we have utilized data. Yes, we have done the assessments, and we have included dementia. And oh, by the way, we've done it with outside money every step of the way. And the three best practices that we'd really like to focus on are the ones bolded in red. Where can we go with this? We can review the municipal policies and regulations with a goal of promoting aging in all policies. So one of the questions that comes to mind for our team, can we align the age-friendly work with the Board of Selectmen goals? And can we embed that in this new project management tool? Is that a possibility in Yarmouth? Can we create an online database with local information and resources of programs, services, discount programs, and benefits for older adults and their caregivers? So like, can we innovate a program funding support to have coordinators and use more technology and software in this shared economy that we all now live in? Develop policies and services to improve elder economic security. We know that 32% of our seniors are living at or below the economic security level, and we know that 60% of our students are on federally subsidized lunches. So can we help people in the community with programs like the wonderful ones we already have, in our program of tax deferral, our property tax work off? The handyman program might be actually being fulfilled by the Village Program now. Energy assistance, the transportation, we've got a lot of work to do there, and the designation of age-friendly employers. I think there was an award actually given out in Yarmouth recently. So can we change language in funding streams to empower an age-friendly continuous improvement going forward? Because that, in fact, is what the governor's asking us to do. So now I'll introduce an officer and a gentleman, Jerry Bedard, to follow up with what we're actually doing in this fiscal year.
Thank you. Last year, if you remember, I didn't know speaking at all. This year, I've been promoted. She's allowing me to talk. Briefly my background, I'm retired assistant principal, teaching assistant principal from Worcester. I'm a retired commander, Navy Reserve. On the age-friendly committee, I'm the liaison to the school apartment. I'm a member of the new school board advocacy committee, and I am a strong believer of intergenerational activities. The ADA Disability Committee complete appointments and confirmed funding pathways. Continued support of senior services, Voyager fan expansion budget plan. Dementia Alzheimer's friendly plan, integration into age-friendly plan. Caregiving, adult day program support integrate. Priority, that is a local daycare program. That's one of our local programs. We have a main priority. The intergenerational programs. The first one is IM, the Intergenerational Model UN. That is one that I am very, very pleased with. In the last couple of years, we've done four programs, and they have been very, very successful. The school, the school apartment is very, very pleased with them. On October 26, we are taking 22 students and going to the Mass Council on Aging in Falmouth, and we're going to pair them up with 22 delegates from the convention. We're going to do an intergenerational Model UN there on aging. It is great public relations for the town of Yarmouth, be representatives from across the state. We are looking forward to doing a program in the spring, taking approximately 25 students, 25 adults, to the boot mill in Lowell, where we'll do a Model UN on women. IPET, intergenerational with PET. That is a program aging in place where we were trying to have a pet for a senior. That is a program that is physically and mentally enhancing for seniors. It is a program where they tend to the pet. It also prepares them for aging, carrying the pet, and preparing their own end-of-life and the pet's end-of-life. IVET, intergenerational veterans. I am inviting all of you on November 8 at 9:00 AM to come to DY High School. We're having the first intergenerational musical veterans review, where we're having the DY Band Chorus, the New Home Band.
New Horizon.
New Horizon, I'm sorry. Band with veterans of various ages interspersed with the musical program, which will be the first where we'll hopefully having this in the future. It's the first intergenerational program, military program. We'll hopefully be more. Intergenerational learning. This is what we're doing with the schools. We're hoping to have access to the STEAM program, labs, auditorium, cafeteria, a gym that is adaptable to physical education spaces for various ages, physical use, a building to establish much-needed relationship between young and older residents. Housing, explore the Minka demonstration site. Smart tiny house for seniors to touch and feel. Hopefully, we'd have a small tiny house on the property, possibly the senior center, where the seniors could go into and actually walk through, see innovative new development program, actually touch materials that they could see for an aging-in-place life that they could have. Regional integration, collective impact, and continuity with community compact. Community participation in regional survey. Towne Yarmouth signed up to be part of this in 2018. Housing, transportation, and caregiving. Yarmouth fundings in 2016 and continued focus. Isolation and cognitive behavior, public health concerns. We are paying attention to all of these, continued focus. We will participate, we'll work with the region. We have discussed these with Vera Harrick, Principal County in Health Human Services. We are trying how Yarmouth will lead with the region in these areas. Strategic planning process will produce an action plan for fiscal 2025 to be submitted to the World Health Organization. Meet cross-functionally with other committees and departments to identify collaborative possibilities. We have tentatively scheduled with various departments in the town where the Age Friendly Community Team will meet with them, getting their viewpoint, some of their goals, to see if we can integrate those in two hours. Conduct community focus groups. Utilize event feedback summaries. Evalues from fiscal year '16, '17, and '18. Measure progress indicators, link money invested to return on investment. Social capital, quality of life, and happiness. Thank you.
So finally, so where are we going? Our strategic plan will not be available for you until the spring, so this is a projection of what we think it might look like based on what's in front of us now. We need to create an age- and dementia-friendly investment fund to sustain our work. Prior to this date, we've been dependent on Tufts Health Plan Foundation and have received the benefits of $250,000 to do all that we previously highlighted. Continued support to expand transportation through the senior services budget is a clear pathway that needs help in the FY '20 budget. That's a dollarized amount that we can talk about now. We can see a time where we're hiring coordinators to match people of all ages and resources to support intergenerational housing, pets, tech, vets, and learning experiences through technology. We can see that there will be money needed to buy that technology in the form of software, hardware, support services, and materials. We can see a senior center that is virtual, that our homebound senior could be participating in everything from programming at the senior center to the library and in the schools and in your meetings, right from their home place. And we can see this Minka that is a tiny home equipped with solar and smart inside equipment where the seniors could touch and play to see, you know, what do these dispensers that are automatically feeding meds look like? What does a virtual senior look like, senior center look like? We believe that we can build intergenerational age and dementia-friendly space all across this community, in our schools, in our playgrounds, and even in a day center. We believe that we still have more education to do because it's a big change that we're asking, and how do we do that? We believe more human-centered design events where everybody weighs in together is the way to go. We even see that there will be a need to hire a grant writer to capitalize on all the possible angel funders, non-angel funders, governmental and non-governmental resources that are available to us if we truly want to be the incubator and innovator of all things. So an example of the policy-changing opportunities that lie ahead, that currently would be a no from Boston and a no from Yarmouth, lies in the language, we believe. So if currently the language in your CPA grant, for example, says "to meet all residents and visitors' recreational needs by providing balanced year-round leisure facilities to promote healthy lifestyles while protecting sensitive natural resources," we're going to ask everybody to think of our aging citizens and all citizens as sensitive natural resources. And we're thinking of a person, homebound person, their right to participate in leisure activities as they age in place in their home, and our possibility of using the great technology that's out there to do that. And we're asking for transportation. We have amazing programs all across this community, but we have access problems. We can't get people to these programs because of transportation, their economic security, and their physical challenges. So we're going to ask, and we're going to ask Boston, not just Yarmouth, with the help of Governor Baker, because he has empowered us to do this in the community compact, to challenge the language of funding streams found in an example like this or many others, to help us get that investment fund going that we need to continuously improve on age and dementia-friendly. Yarmouth, with your help and leadership, thank you very much. Do you have any questions?
It's always a pleasure to have you here, Kathy.
Thank you, Tracy.
Because you do such a great job, and I just have to thank your team. Great presentation, a lot of great information. I'm happy to see us continuing to move forward. I support all the initiatives that you're working on. A lot of it is just really, it's wonderful. I've had the ability to be to a few of the things you've done in the past, and it's just amazing. It's amazing work, really, when you see the youth and some of our elders, they learn from each other, and that's the amazing part of it. It's not one way. It's not, you know, the elder is teaching the young, and it really goes both ways. I am interested in the grant funding. I think that there's so many grants out there now, and, you know, when we talk about, you know, one-time things that we should be able to try, that possibly would be something I support. I think one of the things we always have to be careful about is all the stipulations that go along with the grants, but I think a grant funder typically, from what I've seen in the past, it's a well-worth investment. Most of them more than fund themselves in the money that they bring back to a community. One of the things that I've seen, and you've talked about it here, about snowbound, having people age in place, one of the things that I've seen in my own neighborhood that's always problematic is the fear of snow. And I think that it's a big deciding factor of people being able to live on their own. We had a woman who couldn't shovel, and as soon as the snow would start to fall, she'd call, and because Meals on Wheels couldn't get to her, she couldn't get out if the ambulance had to come. She was so worried about the snow. And I'm not sure what we could do, working with our youth, or having maybe a list at the high school of somebody who'd be interested, and maybe we could get our business community to help support that, or something that we could do, because I think that that, in terms of being able to age in place and living alone, that's really something that is a barrier.
Absolutely.
So that's really the only thing I can think of additionally to the items that you have here. I just look forward to your continued work.
Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you.
Mike? Mark?
Thank you for being here, and thank you for also making sure that we got a copy, another copy of the Age Friendly Yarmouth Needs Assessment Report. I think it's very helpful to sort of remind ourselves of some of the critical needs in the community here, so I very much appreciate that.
You're welcome.
No, just once again, thank you. I always look forward to hearing your updates, and it was great that Jerry got a chance to speak.
You did good, Jerry.
Thank you.
He is an officer and a gentleman.
By act of Congress. Mike?
I'd like to also thank you, Kathy, for all the good work that you do, and those that are on your staff and your helpers and volunteers. What was interesting was some of the key findings of the community survey, and it seems that one of the big issues is transportation accessibility. And when I was looking at those findings, I couldn't but help notice the parallel between elderly and the disabled in that respect, that access seems to be a key issue, a core issue. And moving forward, do you have any... And moving forward, do you have any, just, I know it's very early in the process, but any general ideas as to what's really going to be needed to address that?
Well, you know, we have plenty of room for expansion for the senior services Voyager van system, Mike. As you well know, Yarmouth was late in the game to even adopt a van service for senior citizens, very late compared to most of the Commonwealth. Another community that I worked for prior to this one, a third of this size, had two vans and a double the van driver availability for a community half a third of this size. So we're behind there. So that's an obvious place for improvement. That's why the team is about continuing to expand the transportation system there. Transportation in general, partnering more closely with the CCRTA. And looking at the access issue, Mike, that you've identified in this CPA, this is why we chose the CPA funding stream, not that that would be the end solution for us, but when some of the language crafted for some of these pots of money were developed, natural resource preservation and recreation programs and historical programs were viewed in one way. I don't know what date all that stuff was crafted, but here we are in the year 2018, and what we know about our community is that access, both in the form of mobility and in the form of affordability, is the root challenge of housing, transportation, caregiving, right? That's the challenge in all three of those categories. So how do we start to look at funding streams differently to address access? Because you have a third of your seniors that cannot afford programming at the senior center, and they cannot afford transportation, right? And then the mobility issue, do you really want the aging driver that has lost their license because their doctor has recommended that they no longer drive to not have transportation to programming? Do you want to be part of elevating the isolation and then the depression and mental cognitive challenges that come from that? So as a community, we have to decide. We have to decide what we want to do for the people that cannot. Like those homebound people, when I talk about technology, because that's the only access solution I see for the homebound, right? They can't be here tonight to talk to you. They depend on us to talk to you, right? And when Tracy brings up the snow, they're not going to talk to you about how the fact that in an emergency, they really can't get out of their house. And so when we wrote the letter for Eversource, even just a little process about that, it is all about gaining access for the weakest and most vulnerable amongst us. Did I answer you enough?
Oh, yes, you did.
Okay.
And I got to tell you a funny story, and this is true. I had a one, I don't know her age, I'm going to guess between 75 and 80, a client, and the subject came up about how she gets around and everything. Her husband was deceased, and she said, "I drive." And she said, "But I'm going to stop because I can't see when I look to the left." She said, "My doctor says I can drive, I'm all right, but she says I know I can't."
Yeah.
And I said to myself, "My God, you know, you've got more sense than, than your physician." I find that very interesting that, because I think most seniors strive for independence.
Absolutely.
Usually, the opposite's the case, where people have to convince them to give, give that up, and that's very difficult. It's extremely, I think, the whole thing about being cared for as, as a senior is an extremely difficult thing to accept and is an extremely difficult role. I mean, I, I've been a caregiver all my life to my children and their children, and it's, to me, unimaginable that I would be in a reverse situation, and they would be providing care for me. And I think that is hard for people as they age. I think that's a real difficult challenge that underwrite, that underscores all of this.
Right. And just because they're at home doesn't mean that they couldn't mentally, through a virtual senior center, connect to a meeting like this and have a brilliant professor like we had John Gibson, who helped us before, that wrote the Human Rights Dictionary under Eleanor Roosevelt, guiding our team to build this intergenerational Model UN. You have people like that in your community at home, their minds are working great, let's invite them in, but let's use technology to do it. And, oh, by the way, across the nation and the world, people, progressive-minded people using technology, there are a lot of angel donors that would love to see us step up and ask to be that community on Cape Cod that wants to try this stuff. And we might fail at some of the components, but we might just get it right and be on the leading edge of solving some problems. So I would implore you to think innovatively.
What is, can I just ask one more question on that?
Sure.
In that technology of allowing them in, is that, is that something we don't have now?
Yeah, we don't really have it, but there's this great product, Tracy, that I was able to find at the International Federation on Aging Conference, coming out of Israel, that they are actually doing it in the high-end facilities, you know, where 1% of us will actually land for, as we age, like maybe 10%, but mostly 1% of us, where they can actually tie the senior into the senior center or into this meeting, and they can participate virtually. And the technology is moving very rapidly, so we could do that for our constituents. So for example, I would love to see some of the older women right now that are part of the knitting program be able to, to use this technology to sit with their friends at the senior center while they're at their home, right? And hear them and talk to them, and we could just begin to layer that out. And then we could have some of these people work with our kids in the school from their home as they're connecting internationally in their studies. The technology is there, the, the ideas are there, and the technology community in Massachusetts, my God, where else could you make that happen? And you shouldn't-
I would love to see a fair town meeting.
Right? Wouldn't that be so fun and so inclusive? I love the way you guys think.
Yeah.
I don't know where you get these ideas.
I think, though, the challenge there, Kathy, too, is that generally, the younger people are, the more technologically savvy they are, and the older they are, the more removed they are-
Yeah.
-from, from technology.
Yeah.
So that whole educational process has to come into play, too.
Yeah, and I think that from our conversations, from Jerry's hard work with the school system, I really believe that the school people are ready to have fun with that, too, and engage the students. Because if you think of a place like I came from in central Massachusetts, where all the technology companies were, those children grew up with parents that were in technology, right? We have a lot of retirees on the Cape that came out of technology. If we start putting some of these things together, we benefit everybody's education, young and old, and the school system sees that as well. So, you know, I don't think we wait. I think we find some fun Angel funders and have some fun in age-friendly Yarmouth, and continue to lead like we have since 2014.
Again, thank you for all the work you've done. You know, I just, you're touching on all the bases in terms of things that are really important to seniors, and, you know, I know personally, the housing issues are significant. Making it more affordable for seniors to remain in their homes, I think, is a key issue.
Huge.
And, you know, I'm glad that we're able to do something with regard to, you know, property taxes and allowing people to work for the town and generate some income or credits against their taxes. I think that's, that's an important way for people to feel independent.
Right. Great programs.
You know, one of the, I live in an area where, out of the 50 homes in our neighborhood association, one of them has children, and the other 49 are retirees. And what I see is, you know, a lot of the things that you've talked about are addressing issues for them. One, one thing that Tracy touched on, that, you know, everybody's afraid of snow, well, there's other things that they're afraid of as well.
That's right.
That is a concern, but one of the frustrations is trying to find reliable contractors, people that will come and help. And, you know, when you get one or two snowstorms a year, it's kind of difficult to find somebody that'll come and address that, shovel the walk or, or plow the driveway, whatever they, they really need. And it would be nice if we had a list of contractors, not only for snow removal, but for other services as well, but contractors that have proven that they provide a reasonable service or product and do it reliably. And, you know, talking kind of like of the, you know, there's a number of, of services that, that do that on the internet now, but it'd be nice if we could partner with them locally in, in some way, and, and get a, something that was specific to the Cape to help people identify who to call for things. And I know we're doing handyman services and that sort of thing, but there's only so much we, we can do-
Right.
-with volunteer effort. I think if we had, could extend that by providing a resource of, of known contractors that are reliable and trustworthy, that, that would be terrific, I think.
Right, Norman, that, that's that idea of empowering the databases, what are the right shared economy databases, and who are the right coordinators, and who do they report to? And how do you set up the structure of risk mitigation for the town when something goes wrong? But it is all doable.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thanks again. Okay, we're going to move on to the Parker's River Bridge Project land-taking vote.
Mine is five.
Kathy Williams, Town Planner.
Sarah Bellino, Town Council, with me, Talimane Costa.
As you know, the town's been working for quite some time to replace the Parker's River Bridge along Route 28 as a title restoration project. As this is a town project, any easements or takings that are necessary to construct and maintain the bridge is something that the town needs to acquire and then give to Mass DOT. So what you have included in your packet tonight is those actual orders of taking and land damages agreements and temporary easement agreements that we need to move forward with the project. Also contained in your packets are actual motions for the board to move forward with those takings, as well as paying damages associated with them, based on the appraised values for the various easements and takings.
Okay, thank you. You know, we've, we've had discussion previously about the nature of the work that needs to be done, as well as the areas of contention with some landowners that have not been fully cooperative and so forth. And so, so I guess we're at the point where we need to move ahead, take the land, and then we'll be able to work with the state on, on getting the, the work done on the bridge, the replacement of the bridge.
Correct. The town would actually be hiring the contractor, using the various grant funds that have been acquired, and the Hurricane Sandy funds, the time limit on that is coming up quickly, so we do need to move forward.
What's the total on those funds, so just so the public understands?
The total of the Hurricane Sandy funds was about 3.3 million. There was also an additional $500,000 from NRCS, and then another $663,000 from NOAA that we received, in addition to the town CPA funding, which we received for up to 100, $1.6 million.
I just think it's important that the public understand the significance of this project, and not only the significance of the, of the funding, this project's virtually being done with no tax dollars.
CPA funding is being used for-
Correct.
-preservation of open space, but that's different, I guess, from the tax-
Yeah, well, I mean, it's, I guess it is tax funds, but-
Well, and I think if you-
Norm will correct me on that one.
No. As, as we recently learned during the parade, week or two ago, we walked across that bridge and-
The rebar showing it's awful.
Looking at the sides of it, I mean-
It's in awful shape.
Looking at, you know, the, the, well, the sides, the railings and so forth is not necessarily indicative that there's a safety problem underneath, but it, it sure looks terrible.
It does, indeed.
The public should also know that this bridge project will help the flushing of-
That's right.
-the Parker's River. And so this is-
That's significant.
-one piece in our overall reduction of nitrogen program with, with all the work that we've been trying to do. Instead of sewers, well, we'll, we'll need that as well, but this is an alternative that will increase the flushing and so, and benefit our-
So we have, we have five motions, and Tracy assured me she could do-
I'll read them.
She could do fast-talking, like the advertisements for-
I move that the board adopt an order of taking of real property pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 79 in the town of Yarmouth, as authorized by Articles 32 and 33 at the 2016 annual town meeting for the purposes of construction, maintenance, and roadway easements and fees interested, interests associated with the roadway utility and bridge improvement projects on Main Street, Route 28, in the vicinity of Parker's River Bridge, Yarmouth, Massachusetts. To be taken are the following portions of the properties located at 681 Route 28, Yarmouth, Mass, supposed to be held by Gold Village Waterside LLC, an easement adjoining southerly location line of the January 10, 1933, layout number 2977, state highway alteration of Main Street, Route 28, and continuing about 370, 376 square feet, and depicted as parcel 12-gr-3 on the sketch plan attached heretofu as Exhibit A. An easement in a parcel of land adjoining in southerly location line of January 10, 1933, layout number 2977, state highway alteration, Main Street, Route 28, and containing about 505 square feet, and depicted as parcel 12-d-2 on the sketch plan attached heretofu as Exhibit A. The parcel of land containing about 358 square feet and depicted as parcel 12-4 on the sketch plan attached to, attached heretofu as Exhibit A. A temporary easement in a parcel of land containing about 6,110 square feet and depicted as a temporary easement 12-te-5 on a sketch plan attached heretofu as Exhibit B. Said temporary easement shall expire with the completion of the work contemplated in the order of taking. And the following portions of the property located at 703 Route 28, Yarmouth, Mass, supposed to be held by Stephen M. Katz. An easement in a parcel of land adjoining the southerly location line of January 10, 1933, layout number 2977, state highway alteration of Main Street, Route 28, and containing about 349 square feet, depicted as parcel 12-gr-4 on sketch plan attached heretofu as Exhibit C. A fee in parcel of land containing, a fee interest in a parcel of land containing about 372 square feet is depicted as parcel 12-6 on a sketch plan attached to here, to as Exhibit C. A temporary easement in a parcel of land containing about 4,287 square feet and depicted as temporary easement 12-te-7 on sketch plan attached heretofu as Exhibit D. Said temporary easements shall expire at the completion of work contemplated in the order of taking. A temporary easement in a land, in, I'm sorry, in a parcel of land containing about 413 square feet and depicted as temporary easement 12-te-8 on sketch plan attached heretofu as Exhibit D. Said temporary easement shall expire at the completion of work contemplated in the order of taking, and to award damages as follows. $900 for said permanent easement 12-gr-3. $1,200 for said permanent easement 12-d-2. $1,700 for said parcel 12-4. $8,000 for said temporary easement 12-te-5. $1,150 for the said permanent easement of 12-gr-4. $2,500 for said parcel 12-6. $6,600 for said temporary easement 12-te-7, and $650 for a temporary easement 12-te-8.
I second the motion.
That was too easy.
Just trying to keep us on schedule, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right. Well, any discussion? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I have another motion. Sorry for the public.
Would you like relief?
Uh, no, I don't mind doing it. I just think that the public needs to know that this is all things that need to be recorded and need to be read into the record as, as very particular. I move that the board vote to authorize a payment in the amount of $3,650 to the Maritime Heritage Research Laboratories LLC for the acquisition by Mass DOT of interests in portion of, in portions of real property located at 674 Main Street, West Yarmouth, Mass, shown as 12-p-u-e-1, 12-gr-1, and 12-1 on the sketch plan, to be recorded with an order of taking in connection with a roadway utility bridge improvement project on Route 28 in the vicinity of Parker's River Bridge, Yarmouth, Massachusetts, and referenced in the land damages agreement between Mass DOT and Maritime Heritage Research Laboratories LLC. The payment will be made from the United States Department of Interior Hurricane Sandy Coastal Resilience Funds, authorized under the Disaster Relief Appropriations Act of 2013, obtained by the town for this project, and not until such time that Mass DOT has recorded in order of taking said property in the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds in connection with the land damages agreement between it and Mar-
in connection with the land damages agreement between it and Maritime Heritage Research Laboratories.
I second the motion.
Okay, any discussion? Those in favor, please say aye.
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 I move that the board vote to accept the temporary interest in land at 674 Route 28, Yarmouth, Mass, as described in a grant of temporary easement from Maritime Heritage Research Laboratories LLC by and through its manager Barry Clifford for the purposes of construction and maintenance associated with a roadway utility and bridge improvement project on Main Street, Route 28, in the vicinity of Parker's River Bridge, Yarmouth, Mass, pursuant to the authority granted by the board by its Articles 32 and 33 of the 2016 Annual Town Meeting, and for consideration of said land, to make a payment of $1,700 to said Maritime Heritage Research Laboratories LLC. The payment will be made from the United States Department of the Interior Hurricane Sandy Coastal Resilience Fund, authorized under the Disaster Relief Appropriations Act of 2013, obtained by the town for the purpose and not until such time that the temporary easement has been signed by Maritime Heritage Research Laboratories and mortgagede.
I second that.
Any discussion? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I move that the board vote to approve, I'm sorry, vote to accept the temporary interest in land located at 668 Route 28, Yarmouth, described in a grant of temporary easement from the Parker's River Realty Trust by and through its trustee Gerald Manning for the purposes of construction, maintenance, and roadway easement, and fee of interest associated with the roadway utility and bridge improvement project on Main Street, Route 28, in the vicinity of Parker's River Bridge, Yarmouth, Mass, pursuant to the authority granted by the board by Articles 32 and 33 of the 2016 Annual Town Meeting, and for consideration of said grant, make a payment of $1 to the Parker's River Realty Trust.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Those in favor, please say aye.
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 I move that the board authorize Dan Knappick, Town Administrator, to execute all and any documents, any and all documents, and agreements necessary in connection with the Parker River Title Restoration Bridge Replacement Project, the eminent domain takings of real property, and votes related to this project, and to further authorize Dan Knappick to administrate the payment of damages and compensation, as voted by the board, to the owners of the real property acquired for the aforementioned project.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Those in favor, please say aye.
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 Was that 15 minutes?
That was good.
Excellent, thank you.
I have the signatures.
All right.
I think I can get this reported. Well, just two on this one, and then if you want to start here and pass it along, you've all signed, I'll just do one over each.
Sure. Signed by the clerk.
I already did, he's got it.
I think this is just, I think she'll notarize, she'll take, she'll take your notes.
She'll notarize it, okay.
Yeah.
We'll let him be the keeper of all the records.
Yeah, I mean, this is the...
She's just gonna take your notes.
Who knows what these people are gonna do, you know, once you send them, oh yeah, who knows, once you send them out, it's...
Okay, let's move ahead then, thank you very much, glad we could get that out of the way at this point. We're gonna move on to the Problem Properties Update.
Good evening, Mark Rills, Town Yarmouth Building Commissioner, with me Bruce Murphy, Health Director, my faithful sidekick, and tonight we're here to talk about problem properties, blighted properties, and the numerous complaints that we receive about them, you heard somebody talk at, at the public comment section about them, we're gonna kind of elaborate on what we do now, and look for some input from the board moving forward, if not tonight, maybe at another time. So with that, this is our update for you. Municipal inspections, main objectives is public safety through equal enforcement of applicable laws, codes, and bylaws, unsafe structures and occupancy can be life-threatening, issue permits and licenses in a timely manner, respond to the public to address their needs, requests, and complaints. Problem property complaints, in fiscal year 18, public complaints regarding alleged violations of building zoning and health codes totaled almost 350, both written and verbal. Written complaints are generally required, and not all complaints are violations. They are often neighbor disputes and not enforceable by either department because they're civil in nature. What's a problem property? The one on the left is pretty obvious. I've been chasing Deutsche Bank for about three years now, and they just yell at me in German and tell me to call New York, and I get nowhere with it, so. The one on the right is actually a cease and desist order that I posted on a mini school bus that a gentleman was living in in the driveway, and the rest of the property was pretty ugly and unkempt, but I was able to write a zoning violation on that, that's an obvious one. Some of them aren't so obvious, this is a house that's empty, the grass is overgrown, the paint's peeling, the bushes are overgrown, nobody lives there, but we get numerous complaints about these types of properties every year. Municipal inspections response staff is comprised of the Building and the Health Department, myself, Building Commissioner, Director of Municipal Inspections, Health Director and His Assistant Health Director Bruce Murphy and Amy Von Home, we have four office administrators, two each, two building inspectors, one part-time building inspector, one housing inspector, and he deals with the rental properties in town, one wiring inspector, one plumbing and gas inspector, a hazardous materials inspector, we've had cases where 55-gallon drums of chemicals have been dropped off and put into people's garages, as they were, fertilizer, for instance, was one that I dealt with, was an illegal business being operated in the town. We also have one health inspector, he deals mainly with restaurant and motel inspections. Typical problem property complaints for health are in violation of the State Housing Code, overcrowding, trash, vegetation overgrowth, rats, pests, pigeons, horses, chickens, et cetera, landlord-tenant disputes such as no heat, no hot water, mold issues, and hazardous material storage. Typical property complaints from the building depart, for the building department are unsafe structures, illegal apartments and boarding houses, illegal uses such as businesses in a residential zone, unpermitted work, fencing disputes, pool code violations, handicapped accessibility complaints such as access, parking, or people removing signage without authorization, recreational vehicles and campers, boats, campers, and whatnot, snowmobiles parked in people's front lawns, and unregistered vehicles, we get every single call it seems for unregistered vehicles, but they're technically a police matter, we still address them with the police. Other responsibilities of the building department, I'm also the zoning enforcement officer for the town, I'm also the chair of the site plan review team. The building department is always represented at the emergency operations center whenever it's activated. Building Commissioner organizes the code impact team, and they are comprised of municipal inspections, Yarmouth Fire, Yarmouth Police, and others. Code impact team addresses problem properties and motel stay violations. Building department is the enforcement arm for Olkings Highway. Building, Yarmouth Fire, and Health work together to issue certificates of inspections to allow for the issuance of liquor licenses every year. We inspect every single motel and hotel annually before they're occupied, they get a license annually, and also I'm in charge of the sign code enforcement.
You are a lucky man.
I'm glad someone thinks so. Other responsibilities of the Health Department, they do periodic restaurant inspections, Title V septic permitting and inspections, housing rental licensing, inspections and enforcement, hazardous materials management and licensing, review building permit applications, every, just about every building permit that goes through my department has to be reviewed for, by the Health Department to make sure they have enough septic capacity to handle any additions that are being done. They run various health clinics, they also issue funeral director licenses, stable licensing inspections such as for chickens and horses, et cetera. There's actually two pages of different types of licensing that the Health Department issues, and I didn't want to bore you with all of them, so I picked a few good ones. These codes and laws include several Mass General Laws for building and zoning, and State Sanitary Code, Mass State Building Code, which is new in January 2018, so there's a bit of a learning curve for our department with these new codes that come out, international building and residential codes with Massachusetts amendments, 521 CMR, AAB, is the Architectural Access Board, it's the Handicapped Access Code for Massachusetts, it replaces ADA, Town Yarmouth zoning bylaws, Town of Yarmouth general bylaws, just a couple of specifics for the building department, and also the Health Department, 105 CMR State Sanitary Code, and the Town of Yarmouth Rental Code. Typical response activity, when we get a complaint, there'll be an initial investigation, we prepare and document everything that we see, we conduct site or office visits and meet with tenants or owners. Continuous phones, phone calls, letters, emails, we meet in person, you know, depending on the time that we have, and the number of calls that we have. We have to conduct research to determine if it's an actual violation, we don't want to violate anybody's civil rights. We send notices of violation, quite often multiple people love to ignore the first couple that I send them, but it's the ones that I send with a monetary ticket attached to them, I usually get some sort of response from. Site visits to confirm resolution, we've gotta follow back up again to make sure that they're, they've met the code. If none of that works, we end up in Superior Court, District Court, or the Housing Court in Plymouth, if, if it's required. We've also had several instances of the corrected violations reverting back to the original status, it starts this whole process all over again, and the people don't stop complaining just because we got it resolved, as soon as it starts up again, they're back on the phone calling us or visiting the office. Is this hoarding? This is an owner-occupied home, this is somebody's backyard, this is what the neighbors had to look out their windows and visually look at every day, and allegedly there were rats running across the top of this stuff that you see here. I didn't see any sign of rats, but I certainly could see the mess in the yard. Addressing hoarding, it's not easy to deal with, they're typically elderly, but they're not always. The family tends to be disconnected, they've just given up, they just, they can't, it's a mental disorder, they can't really help them, so the family's just kind of biding their time. Municipal inspections with the help of Yarmouth Police have asked for the help from, of social workers from the Town of Yarmouth Senior Center, as well as Cape Cod Hoarding Task Force on a couple of occasions. Resistance actually from the families of these, of the hoarders has been, has been pretty high, they, they just resist, they don't want to, they don't want to hurt their family member, it hurts their feelings, they just get very attached to their belongings. And it's ended without results. The end result is there's no change, neighbors continue to view the blight. Typical of many of the blighted properties in town, there's a substance abuse issue, there are physical limitations of the occupant, there are financial limitations of the occupants, there's absentee owners, there are bank-owned properties, or the landlords that don't pay much attention to their property, illegal operations of businesses, mental illness and hoarding. Options for you guys to consider, we're almost done here, new bylaw, modify existing bylaws to include strict fines after a very short period of time, continue with the limited enforcement as we're currently doing, request the assistance of Town Council earlier in the process, so ask them to get them to the courts quicker, as opposed to us writing three and four letters and sending tickets and multiple site visits, instead of, you know, if we don't get compliance in a few, with a few visits perhaps, get Town Council involved earlier. If we had a housing court in Barnstable, it'd be very helpful, instead of driving to Plymouth to go deal with these issues, or to get to District Court, or even Superior Court, it's just expensive and timely. I've, actually, in the budget this year, I've put in for funding to allow for the use of the Mass Attorney General's Office Abandoned Housing Initiative, and what that is, is we've identified 10 vacant properties, or blighted, or blighted vacant and abandoned, apparently abandoned, properties, and the Attorney General's Office actually, the Abandoned Housing Initiative, they step in, we do an inspection, I, the town has to pay for the locksmith to unlock the door, we don't want to kick them in, they, this AG's office secures the, I can't even think of it, they get the courts to allow us to enter the building, they, once we've gotten that, that's it?
Search warrant.
Yes. Administrative warrant is what they actually issue from the AG's office, gets there from the courts, allows us to enter these properties. Once they've identified, once we've identified by creating a report for them, the AG's office then takes the building into receivership, assigns a contractor to renovate the property, the town gives up at that point, we don't have to do anything, the AG's office takes over from there. It's an initiative that they've been doing for several years now, it seems to be working in other towns, and I still speak with her on a regular basis, so she's still on board with us when we're ready to go. Funding to increase the manpower to address the problem properties, housing inspector and other building inspector would be most helpful, especially in the spring, you know, from May to August, we have so many complaints that we just can't, we just can't keep up, so, 350, 350 complaints we get are typically, you know, from the spring until mid to late summer, although we just, I just got three yesterday, so, they continue. Other department challenges, we've liked to provide a good level of service to everybody, people that come in for building permits and for other permits and other questions, zoning questions, we like to provide them with a good service while we address the complaints, keeping a smile on our face the whole time. Staffing and budgetary restraints are obvious as discussed, constant reprioritizing based on the workload, so we're always, the worst-case scenarios are the ones that we have to address, you know, the dangerous ones, we address right away. Meeting with the Board of Selectment Goals while addressing these problems, these are our challenges that we've been facing, and I don't, I think that's the last of them. Bruce, do you have anything to add? Thanks, Bruce. Unless the last of it.
Okay.
Do you have any questions?
Questions from the board, but what is it that you are asking us to do at this stage?
I'm not asking you actually to do anything, what I, I know that you've had complaints in the past from, from people in the public who presented you this issue that they'd like to be addressed, and I'm just basically presenting you with information, and I've given you a few options to consider, maybe there's more options that I'm not aware of, but, you know, with...
If I may, yeah, so I think to give a little assist to this, I think there's three elements that I'd like to get some guidance from the board on, one would be a supportive motion related to participating in the Attorney General's Program. One of the impediments that we had was, it was a funding situation in the department, because we have to bear the cost of the locksmith, so we were gonna add money in the budget, about $5,000 to get us started, $3,000, to get us started this year to see how it goes, and I'd like to have your support for that when that comes forward. The second aspect is a little bit more complicated in that we've had some interesting dialogue about these blighted properties and what to do about them, we've talked to council and some other folks. One of the things we'd like to trial on them is perhaps using a free cash grant to find the most problematic properties, and then it would be up to the owners to be willing participants in this, where we would pay the cost of the cleanup, lean the property with their permission, with the idea that someday when the property transfers, we get the money back, and just try to see if that can work, like Mark's point is well-taken about many of these folks resist us, I mean, I turned in a property the other day, and when our staff went out to look at the mess, the next-door neighbor came out and said, "Why are we hassling the guy with the mess?" And the guy with the night, that came out to, you know, to talk to our staff, they had a beautiful, probably a million-dollar home there, and they were living next to a place that was symbolic of those pictures, so we, so it's interesting where you get these complaints from, you know, and, but we're trying to find, like, when we do have a, a property owner that's willing to work with us, a tool to help with that cleanup. In the past, I've used a process like this before with municipal funds, we've also enlisted in the past Sheriff's Department, labor, community services with the Sheriff's Department to go in and clean it up, but the whole idea would be if we were to try to identify, like, the cost of a cleanup, like carrying the cost of the dumpster, some labor, maybe overtime on some of our staff positions, would you be supportive of that? Then the third piece is, I think, a little bit more problematic for a lot of folks, particularly at, like, town meeting, to what degree would the board support some strengthening blight, anti-blite-related ordinance? You know, a lot of folks, it's kind of interesting, is, you know, you tend to travel town in your particular pathways, and you get used to seeing what you see, but I hear from a lot of folks who, you know, they go out and they adventure through town walking and this or that, and they're handing us a list of blighted properties, and sometimes they're so well-hidden that, you know, they're kind of off the beaten trail, but what's interesting about that, when you approach, I think, town meetings... trail. But what's interesting about that, when you approach, I think, town meeting and the idea that, well, we'd like to have an anti-blite ordinance passed or bylaw passed, people start thinking about, why is the government coming into my, you know, my backyard type of idea? But there are a fair number of these properties, and we might be able to tighten up a few things in whether or not the board would be receptive to that. But we are trying. We've talked to some folks on the Chamber of Commerce to try to collaborate a little bit on some of these properties. A lot of it comes down to mental health issues and money. And, you know, we've got a pretty good working relationship with YPD's Mental Health. Recent grant opportunities with some staff we've hired and also with the Senior Center. But, but a lot of times it'll come down to dollars and cents. We don't have any money in the budget to do anything with anything, you know. So there are some tools and whether or not you'd be supportive of that.
Okay. Questions, Mark?
First of all, thanks for the, the presentation, the update.
You're very welcome. That was my first one. Thanks for your help.
You're welcome. Complaints. Can you give us a sense of how many complaints we're getting a year and whether or not that's trending upwards, not what's...
It seems to be trending upward. Last year, we've received 350 roughly.
350?
One million.
And they're, are they in the category of what we saw on the photographs where there's that level of...
Some of them are. There's different categories. There's just problems with people building bedrooms in basements and overcrowding the house. No permits to build those basements. One of those houses actually burnt down the beginning of the summer. That, we don't know the cause of the fire. It did burn the house completely to, it took care of itself, I guess. Nobody was hurt luckily.
Okay.
Drug problems can be a problem, you know, just the number of people that move into those. There was one that we actually got condemned eventually. It took a very long time to get it condemned. But the people were actually burning the furniture. They were squatters and they were burning the furniture in the fireplace to keep warm. And we just couldn't get them out. There was just a problem.
Thanks, Mark. Of the 350, how many of them do you think involve rat infestation or potential rat infestation?
I'll leave that to Bruce.
What do you think?
Well...
Because I've been surprised at how serious the rat problem is.
Well, and I think that rat problem, it's Cape-wide, statewide. It's just not a particular, whether it's abandoned property or just somebody has a lot of accumulation in their backyard because the rats also attracted from people who were found out, whether it's their compost pile, feeding the birds too much, bird feeders, chickens where they're putting the, you know, food right on the ground. So there's a lot of issues that go to it. So it's not all going towards the rental issues.
Yeah, I mean, to me, if there's a need for, to me, those are the kinds of cases that sort of rise to the top, where you've got a blight problem that is also a potential public health issue. I think those are the ones that, to me, sort of jump out and would certainly require some really strict approach. I support all the recommendations that the Town Administrator laid out in the table. I'm sure you've been, you know, this is all a collaborative effort, so I think they all are worth looking at and exploring. I would support the extra funding. And the funding would be used for, is it largely inspection staff, Mark?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. I want to just ask another question related to this, but it may very well highlight the need for some other financial support. And that is, when we look at the Airbnb tax that's being discussed on Beacon Hill, do we see that generating potentially more inspection activity? Because if you want to engage in that, that's going to require inspections, correct?
Yeah, that was a point that I was going to bring up, is that with that, it's gone through the legislation, as you know, and the governor's pending to sign it. It's depending what the tax will be to the town. And we would definitely be looking in the Health Department for another housing inspector to keep up with the additional inspections that would be needed. Because we can't inspect all the properties now without one inspector and do the complaints.
Right. Yeah, that's the thing that's been concerning to me is when, if an Airbnb tax were to kick in, we have a fairly large, potentially large, number of rental inspections that would have to be done. I'm not sure how many of these are even currently compliant.
And I'm just saying, it's just rental inspections in general. It's just not A and B, A, B, and B. It's just if you have a regular rental, that's going to be covered by the new tax.
No, but the reason why I raise it is because I don't believe that bill actually allows for funding to pay for the cost of helping implement it. I think municipalities, I think, this was brought up before. I don't know if it was Tracy or Eric, but I think someone, this has been brought up by the board before, whether or not that bill, that legislation, if it were enacted, there may be a municipal impact to it.
Absolutely.
Why, I would like to just sort of bring maybe for future discussion to the Town Administrator. Maybe we need to flag that as an issue and maybe see if there's a way to amend the bill.
So I think one of the, well, one of the ideas behind that is, once the bill, you know, gets signed, then you identify who these folks are, and then they get looped into our rental certificate program.
I was just going to say that. There will be some funding provided through the rental certificates. There's a, if you pay online, it's a $70 fee. If you come in in person, it's an $80 fee. So each one of those annually...
So that, that will cover the cost of the inspection?
No, it won't.
It will cover some of it. It'll, it'll take a chunk out of it.
You need to look at that fee then.
I mean, that's really the key. We don't know how many...
We don't know how many are out there just yet.
You know, illicit operation they're going on that way.
The biggest problem is we don't want to put a barrier to the inspection either. But, you know, I think it's extremely important that these people who are renting out their house have the inspection because some of them have no smoke alarms, no carbon monoxide. They come to a place and they expect it to be...
Safe.
Yeah.
No question. No, I'm...
Station for another next...
And I do think we should, I don't see any downside to asking that the bill include language to cover the cost to municipalities. We, I don't, I see that as a very reasonable request.
I was under the impression that the tax, on the rental tax, would go back to the town.
It'll go in our general fund. We'll have to earmark it.
Yeah, but I'm not sure this would be an authorized use.
We're getting a little far astray here. Can we get back to the blighted properties, you know, and, and we can address the...
I'm just trying to think of a funding source with the chairman.
We can address the issue of Airbnb and so forth at another time. But right now, let's stick with the blighted properties and, and focus on that.
Do we know of any model bylaws in other towns that might be affect, might be affect, having an impact?
I have a, one of my senior volunteers, she's researching the towns on the Cape. I'm searching Cape-wide. Falmouth has one. Bourne has one. Bourne has one for their, their commercial district, so it addresses their commercial properties. Barnstable has one. I've discussed it with them. I haven't gotten a copy of that yet, but they're going to send one over to me.
Okay. Yeah, I'd be very much interested if, if there's a desire to look at a model bylaw that's effective in another community. I'd be very open to talking about that.
Yeah, Barnstable has a very difficult time enforcing theirs. After speaking with them, they just don't think they have enough teeth in their bylaw to address, address the problem. So, you know, and, and people, you know, have rights, as property owners, they have rights to privacy. And they, you know, if people want to live in an ugly house, they can live in an ugly house. That's a fact. But, you know, there are certain things, you know, such as public health, you know, that's, those are the things I think that take precedent.
Thank you. I'm done. Mike?
Like Mark, I support the recommendations that Dan has made. I also think that we ought to take a look at the bylaws from these other towns. And I'd be in favor of at least explore the possibility of, of getting a stricter bylaw with fines imposed. You know, it's the old debate about it's my property, I can do what I want with it. And, you know, the typical police power of, of the state is exercised through zoning. That's, that's intrusion in a, in a sense on somebody's property rights. So you don't really have the right to do whatever you want to do with your property. That's really a false premise. And my sympathies are more with the person that has to live next door to this or see this every day. And it devalues their property and it interferes with their right to quiet enjoyment of their property. And it can invite certain health issues and things like that. The cause of it, whether somebody's a hoarder or they have alcoholism or what, doesn't agenda a lot of sympathy for me. I'm more concerned with the person that has to, that's keeping up their property, that has to live with seeing these unkempt. And now again, you know, I'm not talking about people's grass not being mowed or their house not being painted or they have an ugly car. I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about some of these photographs that show extreme conditions, properties that look more like junkyards than yards. And, and I don't think anybody should really have to live with that. I remember years ago, there was one down in Gateway Isles, and the town litigated when John Creany was Town Counsel, and it took years. And I could be wrong, but the number that sticks in my mind was is tens of thousands of dollars to clean this thing out. I don't know how it ended. I'm assuming they stuck the property owner. I knew who the guy was. And the town went through extreme labors to try to get him to capitulate, to clean up his, his property. And the only thing that actually forced his hand was, was litigation. So again, I'm picking a very extreme, an example. But rodents, I agree, they can be caused by anything, but they can also be caused by filth and places that where they could be harbored in, in yards that are kept with junk or horses, with, with horses. Stuff isn't, isn't properly cleaned out. That can attract rats. And we have a lot of people in town and on the Cape that, that do have animals. So, you know, these are things nobody should have to live around or live with. So, you know, I would, I would very much like to look at, and I think the, when you talk about options, request the intervention of Town Council earlier. I think that's important. And I would refer, I'm not talking about your slider, but your serious cases. I would get Town Council involved early on in the process. Sometimes people listen more when they get a letter from a town attorney, figuring there might be some legal consequences that are going to follow from it. Try to invite their cooperation a little bit more.
And we've tried to do that, but usually it's a visit by a staff person once or twice, and then it's a letter from the department once or twice. Then it's a certified letter, then it's fines. So, I mean, we go through a process to try to be, you know, working out in the community. But there's a good percent that just ignore.
But I, you know, I've lived in this town a long, long time, and I've seen some of these, these extreme cases. And, you know, I think the majority of people obviously want to protect their investment and have a qualitative life in terms of their use and enjoyment of their own property. But you have, you have people that, that do have the mentality, it's my property and I can do whatever I want with it.
Yeah. A lot of them are homeowners that we get these complaints on. It's not the renters.
That's a premise I don't, I don't agree with. But I really appreciate, you know, this presentation because I think it, it shows the broad spectrum of all the different things your offices have to do. And also the, the wide spectrum of complaints that you have to address and deal with. But I don't have an answer or even a recommendation for all of them. But I, what I'm really talking about are these very, very serious violations that nobody should have to live, live with.
Yeah. It's, a lot of it's just time constraints also. Because, I mean, it's 350 complaints that come in, and there's probably three times as that as many follow-ups. So, I mean, you're doing more follow-ups than the complaints coming in. And to get to the housing inspections, we, you know, we almost have, what, 2,700 on the books now of probably 3,000 plus. And we're only able to inspect maybe a third a year because we can't get out to inspect them now with our staff because we're doing complaints and other, other issues. So it's hard to get out there and make sure we're doing all the inspections. And some of those properties, if you're not out there every year, some of the rentals do kind of slip down either between the landlord or tenants.
Okay, Tracy?
What is our responsibility in terms of being involved with the AG's Office Initiative other than, other than the 3,000 that you talked about for, is there a process prior to that that we need to prove that we've gone through before they'll, they'll take it?
Well, we identify them. And we, we attempt to locate the owner of the property and reach them by mail. And a lot of times the phone number's not available. Many times the mail gets returned to us. And if we've reached out several times and tried every resource that we have in order to locate the owner, then we would contact the AG's Office. And she doesn't want one at a time. She'd like to have, you know, three, four, five. I had 10 that I identified for her. Actually, one of them, she, her call from him or her letter from, her, her letter to him prompted him to apply for a building permit to start repairs, although he hasn't done it yet. I'm about to call her again, ask her. She'll shoot one across the bow. But once we've identified them, then we pay for the locksmith to open the door, allowing us to conduct our inspection, write up the violations that we see. No heat is an obvious one. No water would be another one. Once that's taken place, she essentially takes it over, goes back to convince the courts that the AG's Office should be able to take this building into receivership. And then the AG's Office assigns a contractor that they already have a list that they pick from.
I just think about, like, what we do with our tax title situation, making sure that we're not doing that to somebody who's disabled or needs help and how we make sure that we're, you know, taking care of those that actually want help.
I know that Ed Centio's been very good dealing with people like that. And, you know, a couple, one of our problem properties we had was Jerusha Lane. I know you remember that one. That one took us, what, a year? A year or two to just resolve, get it resolved and finally get that property sold. But that was taken into tax title. That was a time when it really did matter. It got him, it got him out of that house.
And what actions do we need to take as a town to be able to participate in that initiative?
In the, in the AG's Initiative? We need to identify them. We need to reach out and then let her...
So we don't have to take any vote, that you could just...
Yes.
Okay.
Some funding.
I guess...
Yeah, we know that.
You know, obviously I support that as long as the due process prior to that, you know, we're not turning over...
I'm a big one on due process, so, yeah.
The bylaws, I'd be interested in seeing the bylaws and hearing from the towns what's been successful and what's not. I'm, I agree with Mike and Mark that we should be looking to, to do things specifically, at least at first, to see if the town's interested in adopting a bylaw that is directly related to health. I think that's, that's the biggest thing. If there's a health impact, those pieces, we need more teeth. The lean, leaning the property and cleaning it up, I'm concerned about liability. I'm concerned about our staff. I wouldn't want our staff doing that. I think that there's a lot of, you know, contaminations and needles, and I'd be very concerned about that. And the mental health issues, the substance abuse issues that go along with it, I'm not sure it solves the problem. Because I think as soon as you do that, it's repetitive unless you get to the root of whatever the issue is. So I'd be concerned about that because I think every year or two, you'd be leaning the same properties. So at what point in time, at what dollar amount, you know, do the taxpayers put that without, you know what I mean? It's, it's a difficult scenario. But I, I appreciate all the work that you're doing. Anything that we can do to help give you guys the tools and the teeth that you need to be able to affect change. I know you guys work very well together as a team. But, you know, I recently had a call from a lady with a, with a smell problem. I know you've been working with her. I have somebody I work with who has a neighbor who, the house has been abandoned, and there's propane tanks all over. That's a safety issue. So we, we need to do something about those types of things. People shouldn't be, be in fear of, of that kind of thing. So if we're going to look at bylaws, I think we should make it specific to really health issues.
Thank you. I think, I think you can see this, you know, pretty much a board consensus on the points that were raised by Dan in terms of supporting the effort. You know, the, the passing a bylaw and, you know, the situation in Barnstable doesn't indicate that perhaps their bylaw is effective at this stage. And, and I think that's the key, that we find some, if, if we need to adopt a bylaw, that it be effective in, in reaching the, the goal that we want to achieve. Just simply passing one so that we say, yeah, we've got one on the books, doesn't make an awful lot of sense to me. I mean, we don't need more regulations if they're not going to work for us. So...
Absolutely.
And, you know, I, I'm a believer in, in trying to positively motivate people as opposed to slapping them with fines and that sort of thing. I mean, you know, obviously the, the worst-case scenarios where you've got people that, that not just being uncooperative, but, you know, throwing it back in our faces, that's another situation. But, but I think you have our support at this point. And I know I've referred a number of situations to the Health and the Building Department. And a number of people have contacted me over, over the past years and complained about situations. And I've asked them to, to talk directly, and, and they've been happy with the response. So, and they're not, they're not easy situations. So, and I don't envy your having to go to a homeowner and, and explain that situation, that someone has complained about their, their upkeep or so forth. So it's not, it's not easy to do. And, but we appreciate the work that you're doing. So...
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. I'll say it. Thank you.
I'll say it. Thank you.
Okay, now we have a DPW update on proposed road projects.
So, this was a request a while back from the board about what's the status of the various road projects. So, Mr. Colby's here to give us an update and also let us know about an upcoming public meeting event scheduled for YPD that deals with the Center Street topic that's been on the books for a while, so.
Thank you very much. Yes, Jeff Colby, Public Works Director. Thank you for inviting me to talk about all the projects that are going on, as I'm sure the board is well aware. We have a significant number that are in the pipeline at various stages, whether it's planning or, you know, in some cases pending construction here in the very near future. So, just as an overview, I know the agenda item says DPW update, but there is a significant town staff component to all these projects. DPW takes the lead in many of them, but we have great partners with our town staff as a project team, and that's greatly appreciated. Many of them are here today to support these projects and answer any detailed questions you might have. So, we'll give an overview and potential funding sources for each of the projects. We're going to cover current projects as well as future projects that are in the queue. It'll be an opportunity, as we did last time we gave this presentation, for the board to provide any project input prioritization. That was helpful last time, and I'm sure that would be helpful this time as well. And then input related to project expediting, and I'll talk about that when I get to that point. So, just a general overview, there's probably some people watching or some people that might even be here that aren't familiar with the different potential funding sources associated with road projects. And these are just the big ones, and at high level, I like to talk about these each time we talk about major projects. There is a state transportation improvement list that is managed by MassDOT. Several of the projects that we'll see tonight are on that list. There is also a regional transportation improvement projects list. This is a list that goes before the MPO, and one of your board members is a representative to that organization. I'm also the chair of the Cape Cod Joint Transportation Committee, which advises the MPO and makes recommendations with regards to projects. There's Chapter 90 funding, which is state funding that's specifically allocated to each individual towns. The town of Yarmouth gets approximately $850,000 each year in Chapter 90. There's also local funding options. There's free cash requests. We've had some of those in the past that have covered some small projects. There's also road improvement bonds, and a version of that is what the town of Yarmouth did a few years back relative to road maintenance funds, where there's a million dollars that was approved and then grows at 2.5%. And we'll talk more about that as we go through the budget process and we meet with the board again. But those are just some basic items. Many towns have taken advantage of that road improvement bonds recently to try to catch up with some of the backlog of their projects. So, our current project list, and I want to spend some time on this particular slide here, the Cape Cod Rail Trail Project. You don't see Phase 1 on that list because that is completed. Phase 2, which is the bridge over the Bass River and a short segment of the trail that's within Yarmouth, at least up to North Main Street, that's scheduled to be completed by November 1st. That's the contract completion date. It is very, very close. There's some really punchless cleanup items they need to do. They need to turn on the flashing beacon that is at North Main Street.
It's on.
And that will be open momentarily then. I know that was what the state was waiting for, to remove the gates and allow that to work. So, if that is now working, that'll be open soon. So, November 1st was their absolute drop-dead date to complete that project. And then there's Phase 3, which is Peter Homer Park to Barnstable. That's in the planning phases right now. There's still a pending 25% design hearing. The 25% design plans have been submitted to MassDOT, but once all the comments are addressed, MassDOT will schedule a 25% design hearing for that project. That is in partnership with Barnstable because there's portions of that trail that are in both Yarmouth and Barnstable. That is currently on the state tip for 2022. The next project, as Dan alluded to at the opening here, is the Route 6A Corridor Improvements Project. We've selected a consultant that is also working on some Center Street elements of that as well. And to that end, there will be a November 1st meeting at the Yarmouth Police Station at 6:00. We're developing a press release. We'll do one of those code red messages as well as get the information out directly to the public through the website and Facebook and all those typical mechanisms that we have relative to getting the word out for that particular meeting. We've got an established email list for people in that neighborhood as well. That'll be focused on Center Street, but there will be a portion of that which will be an update to the improvements relative to Route 6A. 6A improvements lag a little bit behind in the schedule of things relative to that overall project because the data collection, the survey work, was scheduled to occur this summer, and MassDOT did not allow that work to move forward during the summer months. And so, the bulk of the survey data collection had to happen in September and October. They do expect to have that data collection completed by the end of this month, and they'll be able to move that along. But the first visioning meeting with all the appropriate data associated with 6A will likely be early spring. We've got the Parker's River Title Restoration Bridge Project. You've heard a little bit about that tonight, and you made a number of motions in that regard. That is scheduled for construction in 2019, likely to be after Labor Day. We'll be going, now that we have, reaching those final elements of the pre-bid, such as your motions and some other specification development, we'll be looking to go out to bid with that project in the very near future with an award early in 2019. Then there is the Route 28 Bridge over the Bass River. This was subject to a public information meeting they had about two months ago. This is a MassDOT-driven project in the sense that they're paying for both the design as well as construction of that project. That project is what they consider on the fast track relative to wanting to get that bridge replaced, completely replaced as quickly as possible. It is currently on the state tip for 2019. There is some opportunity for, I'm sorry, 2020. There is some opportunity for that to move around a little bit because the next project down is Route 28 at Old Main Street and North Main Street. Those project limits literally are touching each other. One project is immediately adjacent to the other project, so there is some current discussion about marrying the two projects and doing them all at once. From my perspective, that would be a good thing. That would facilitate coordination between the two projects, minimize disruption, there'd be one contractor and a single oversight relative to MassDOT versus a bridge project, intersection project. Sometimes those things can get lost at MassDOT relative to who's overseeing what, so I think that's a good move. But with that said, that North Main Street Intersection Project is scheduled for 2022 on the state tip, and so that means that those projects may need to move around a little bit to line up. Another project is the Bayview Street Drainage and Sidewalk Project. We had a brief discussion about that as it related to the Barnstable Agreement. This is a project that we're doing in conjunction with the town of Barnstable. That project is a sidewalk replacement project, some drainage along that, and a road resurfacing project. And this is a major leg and hub to the hospital. That is scheduled for construction in 2019 as well. That'll be a winter procurement for that particular project. And then two other projects that aren't on this list that I want to throw out there as well, they're not technically road projects, but are the Baxter-Grissmill Project, which is scheduled for construction in 2019 as well. That's a major project that we have a significant town team that's working on that. We have a number of grant sources as well that we need to satisfy some timing and some construction for on that. And then the Flax Pickleball Project, there's been a lot of public interest in that particular project, and there is a bid opening scheduled for that on October the 31st. So, that's moving along. There'll be some construction activity that actually happens this fall on that particular So, our future project list, and we talked about this last time we presented to the board on these projects as well. This is where input from the board would be very important relative to prioritization, where we can put some town efforts and where we can certainly try to put some pressure on the state to do certain projects sooner rather than later, or scheduling in the tip is helpful as well. So, a summary of those projects, I actually have some slides that support more detail to these projects if you wanted to go into that level of detail. But the future projects list includes two that are related to Route 6. One is the Bass River Bridge Replacement. I know the board has had a lot of discussion about that. There are some inspection reports that we've circulated around to the board and others that show some deficiencies related to that bridge. But that is a significant project that both the town of Yarmouth and Dennis would benefit from, specifically related to the increased flushing if we were to open that up. But I would suggest that's a relatively old structure that we'd also benefit as a region from having replaced sooner rather than later. To date, we have not been successful in getting the state to elevate that project. We're in the process of working some of those elements with our local legislative body and through town administration to try to, you know, have those discussions, but the state has officially responded back. MassDOT has officially responded back that it's not very high on their priority list. They actually have scored it relative to what replacement it is on their schedule, and it's down in the hundreds relative to number of bridges that are ahead of it for replacement. So, just something to keep in mind. It is.
Do we know what the rating is on that bridge? I mean, there are safety ratings, or combined ratings in terms of condition that are used by the state and the federal government to prioritize projects.
Right. Yeah, they don't consider this one of those structurally deficient bridges that elevates it. That's something that we're trying to document and encourage them, that might have been missing some elements to that. So, we're working through that process, but to date, we have not been able to get the state to elevate that. I know that's been a board priority, and we'll continue to work on that one. You know, it would be helpful, as we talk about all the projects, to know which ones are priorities for you. But previously, you had expressed that that particular project was a priority for you, so we'll continue to work on that. It doesn't appear in the current projects list just because we haven't gotten the state to acknowledge the need to move that along yet. There's also the Route 6 at Exit 8. This is the Station Ave, Union Street improvements. There's a number of different configurations that could take if that moves forward. Last time I met with the board and talked about projects generally, this didn't rank very high in your list, and so we haven't really done much on that to move that forward. But it's on the list because this MassDOT did give it a project number. So, it is on their list of pending projects. You'll probably see that from time to time, maybe on the MPO list of pending projects because it's in their queue. They've got a project number. They just haven't advanced it, and we haven't put any pressure on the state to advance it because it wasn't a high priority of yours. There's also several on Route 28. There is a sidewalk and repaving project. This is primarily to the west of the Parker's River Bridge, all the way to the Barnstable Town Line. There is a project number on the state tip for this as well. This is one that we need to closely coordinate with, and I'll talk about that in a moment with regard to any future wastewater or sewer improvements. And so, this is one that, although it's on the list, we haven't put a lot of pressure until we definitively know what our timeframe might be to put some pipes in the ground so that we can coordinate that effort and put pipes in before they do any kind of reconstruction or repaving of the road. That would save us a lot of money and certainly a lot of headache. The other project on Route 28 is at Winslow Gray at South Sea. That's an intersection that particularly in the summertime is difficult, but because it is two intersections that don't line up, it's a challenge. It also has some blighted properties associated with that that, you know, I know is a goal of the board to address, and we can go into some more detail on that. There is also the Route 28 at Seaview Ave Intersection Signal that currently has a turn lane on Route 28, but it does not have any signal control. Very difficult to make a left out of that in the summer, but, you know, that's a good Cape Cod thing, it's hard to make lefts anywhere. But certainly at that particular location, we've heard regularly that it might benefit from a signal. Certainly interested in your take on what priority that might have with all the projects that we have to consider. There is also the Kroll Road Drainage and Sidewalk Project. We're looking to potentially pursue some funding related to Safe Routes to Schools. There's two schools there currently. There was also some interest in having Vineyard Wind pay for some of those improvements. If that doesn't look like that's going to be happening or likely, we may advance it on a different schedule or with a different funding source, but that's certainly on the list. We have a highly developed design plan for that. Camp Street Drainage and Sidewalk Improvement is another one that we hear regularly from the public that they're interested in us advancing. It, again, just sits on the future projects list. So, with that said, I alluded to with at least the Route 28 paving project that there's very important relative to utility coordination that we need to do with all of these projects, specifically the ones that are going to happen sooner rather than later. We've had discussions with MassDOT for the Bass River Bridge Project, the Route 28 Bass River Bridge Project, relative to providing sleeving for wastewater pipes to go through. They can do it at the time of construction of the bridge, even if we don't immediately put pipes in there. At least it facilitates the improvements or putting pipes in in the future when and if we need to do that. So, we're looking at all of the projects relative to coordination for utilities. In that, to that end, I did bring, and it's in your packet on the next slide, a map that we're putting together with regards to all the projects along Route 28, not just in Yarmouth, but in Barnstable and Dennis and Harwich. It really takes a high level of coordination relative to what the state is planning to do, what some local projects are, relative to all that utility coordination. I plan to leave that, we'll put it on the website as well with our projects, but I plan to leave that upstairs in the lobby for people to take a look at as well. So, just wanted to, you know, have you aware that there is a level of coordination going on with all these projects to make those happen timely and not to be too disruptive of each other. Project impact, this is also something we're very aware of relative to impact to motorists, residents, and businesses when projects happen. That's the importance of this meeting and many other public meetings we have, is to get the word out. And that's a piece that's within that map that is in front of me. It gives a tentative timeframe for when the project could begin and end, and that would give people an idea of when those things might be happening. And so, this is the map I was referring to. I don't expect anybody to see all the level of detail, but I just want people to know it's out there. It's out there, and we'll have it in the lobby at Town Hall. It'll be on the website as well. But that's the level of detail that's going into trying to coordinate these projects together. So, the future projects, just to give people an idea, I talked through these. I won't spend too much time on them unless the board wants to, you know, jump back and ask questions about these projects. But this is an aerial view of the Route 6 Bass River Bridge Replacement Project, and you can clearly see the restriction and why we would benefit by increasing this. It should be noted, this picture is before the bike trail bridge went over, which did widen that piece of it. So, this is a little more descriptive of some potential funding sources and timing. I won't go into a lot of detail unless I know that you have a full agenda tonight unless you want to come back and talk about these in more detail. Here's the Exit 8 ramps at Station Ave and Union Street. Again, this is an early project in that there's no definitive solution on what that could look like. It could look like additional ramps. It could look like improving the ramps that are there. It could look like some increased signals that could happen there. It's just been identified as a high crash location and assigned a project number without any definitive solution of what that might look like. That obviously is going to take a lot of public vetting and input by this board as to what a solution might be if we advance that project.
Jeff, are the pieces of property that are on the other two sides, they look like they're, I don't know if they're state-owned, those two triangles?
Those two triangles are state-owned. I was just trying to get the razor pointer to work. But in any case, the two other pieces that could be future cloverleafs or just undeveloped property-
Right.
-are state-owned. Yes.
Okay. I mean, that's part of the issue is that, you know, the way the exit ramps work, you're crossing traffic as opposed to blending in with flow of traffic.
That's right. And I think that's a likely potential solution, is to make that blending or merging happen more effectively using available space. Absolutely.
Well, in the case of Station Ave, when they're going, when they're coming down Cape and getting off, there's, they're blending right in and sitting, that's really where it stacks up, is getting off. They're not crossing traffic there, but Station Ave's already backed up.
Right. Well, what I'd be referred to, if you were going west, certainly would be nice to be crossing over.
Cloverleafs, like what they do in downs-
Right, yeah, so that you get the flow of traffic. Same thing in the other direction.
The point is, though, if we need to do something about Station Ave, too, because if doing that's just going to-
No question. I mean-
Further load the problem.
Yeah. I mean, we're going to have, you know, increased traffic flow if everything goes the way it's headed at this stage.
That's true. And to that point, I didn't put it in this presentation, but we are currently reviewing the Station Ave Traffic Signal at White's Path to see if there's any way we can opt- the Station Ave traffic signal at White's Path to see if there's any way we can optimize that timing to maybe relieve some of the pressure there. You know, certainly geographic improvements relative to adding lanes or blending or having slip lanes is probably be a potential solution there. But we're looking to see if we can maybe improve the timing that would reduce the queuing at that signal. So we have a consultant looking at that right now.
How often do they do the crash study? Is it consistent?
They do it ongoing analysis relative to the number of crashes on all of the roads within the Commonwealth. MassDOT keeps data on that. And one of the projects that was on the current project list, which was the Route 28 at North Main Street at Old Main Street, that intersection, that was elevated by the state. I mean, it was on one of our potential project lists, but they are the ones that elevated that based strictly upon the number of crashes that they have in their database. They elevated that one. So, you know, once it gets to a certain level, becomes one of the top 50 crash locations in the state, they automatically elevate it. This has not reached that, but the North Main Street, Old Main Street did, and so they elevated that one.
So we should go out in some hoopy cars in our priority location of lining the intersection at Winslow Gray and just start.
Well, they look at the crash data. We'll leave it at that.
Yeah, really.
So with that said, this is a little more detail like all the projects will have relative to complexity, funding, you know, that type of thing. We certainly could look through this. One thing I do want to point out is it was issued a project number, as I mentioned before. So it's in the queue, anyway. Another future project, and this is with some concepts that were developed, is the Route 28 at Winslow Gray intersection I referred to before. This is one potential scenario as far as a future project goes. It is highly complex, though, relative to property takings, to alignment of the intersection. And many of those takings would be the town's responsibility, as you well know from another project earlier this evening. So those are some of the challenges relative to this project. I think it has a lot of benefits, but it's certainly one of the most challenging of any of the projects that we'll talk about. And that's what basically this slide says relative to complexity, potential funding sources. This because it does not elevate to one of those top 50 crash locations. The state has not elevated this. It's not been assigned a project number. If we wanted to move this forward, we would need to invest town funds in the design and permitting of it with the hope to get it on the state, on the regional tip. And so it's certainly a possibility to do so, but it's a very complicated project. We've seen a lot of projects on that regional tip being delayed or slowed down because of the right-of-way issues. Right-of-ways and takings have been a real challenge in the last couple of years, and this one would be one of the most complicated of all the ones on that regional tip that I'm aware of.
From an economic development standpoint, if this, you know, the funding and perspective on this could be looked at in that regard and emphasized, I think certainly, you know, the existing roadway would provide the landowner with, you know, additional potential land for new development, which would hopefully replace some of the buildings that are real eyesores in that area. I mean, and I don't know what kind of incentives could be provided, but we'd certainly need to look at, I think, not only federal or state funding from a roads perspective, but also think of it as an economic development project.
Absolutely. And I think you've just hit the nail on the head relative to how that could be improved with the lots that could be developed in that particular scenario. So it's just complicated. We have not yet been able to identify a funding source, but they may be out there.
Right.
With that said, here's the other project that I mentioned on Route 28. It's the Seaview Ave intersection. As I mentioned, there's already a left turn lane on Route 28, but the challenge really is off a Seaview and making a left particularly busy times of year. This is a little more detail on the project. Again, we won't spend too much time on that, but interested in your prioritization like all the projects. This one, medium complexity, probably not a huge lift, but it was one that the town would probably have to advance. I don't see this being one of the top crash locations that the state would advance, so.
Certainly one of the scariest during heavy traffic flow. I mean, it's really, really tough.
You're a keypad crawl. I'll teach you.
Oh, yeah.
That's one way to handle it. Another way is to go a different direction.
Well, yeah.
Route 28 sidewalks and repaving. Again, this is a project that would be the pavement reconditioning. We're seeing that the state has done some patchwork out there. Some Band-Aids have been done with regard to
Did it eliminate that political sign?
That's probably gone at this point. This is an older picture. But that, so the state's been addressing some kind of maintenance issues with the paving, but there is a more comprehensive project that has still been assigned a project number and is needed out there. The new standards are related to complete streets to be looking at sidewalk improvements and bike lanes and all that kind of stuff, and that certainly is needed on that stretch of Route 28. A little more detail on that. Complexity seems relatively low as far as the staff team is concerned, but we do need to coordinate that. So timing is key here with any wastewater or utility projects. Higgins-Kroll Road, that's, you know, pretty clear what's needed. There's no sidewalks. Bike lanes are difficult at best. You can see a bike in one of those pictures there. But the sidewalk, there's also some drainage needs there as well. Again, this is a little more detail on the project itself. We won't spend too much time, but this is one that the town would need to be involved, both in the design and permitting, but also the construction. Could be a good Chapter 90 candidate. Camp Street Drainage and Sidewalk, we're almost done with those future project lists. This is a drainage sidewalk improvement project. As you can see by the nature of the road, if you were to walk that and you wanted to get onto the commercial corridor at Route 28 from one of the neighbors, one of the residents or the neighborhoods in there, very difficult and dangerous to do so. So certainly would benefit with alignment changes to the road, but also some sidewalk and drainage improvements as well. This slide speaks to that as well. We ranked this complexity as medium. There's some wetland issues there. There are some challenges, again, relative to the slopes and the alignment of the road that would have to be dealt with as well. It's not simply just putting in a sidewalk. This is something I'm also looking for the board's input on relative to project expediting. There's a number of options out there. I won't spend, you know, too much time on this, but relative to all the projects, things that can be done to speed them up so they don't impact us as much relative to duration. Summer construction certainly could be done to make a project happen faster. I would say these three options that are listed here generally don't happen. But with that said, there are some options. I'd certainly be interested to see what the board's reaction is to if we were to include those on some projects to try to make them happen quicker. One of those is road closures as well, and the other one is night work. An example that I could give you relative to all three of those options, but certainly the first two, is the Parker's River Bridge project. That's probably one of the first of those current projects that we talked about, major projects that's coming right up very quickly here. The engineer brought to our attention that, you know, they're estimating it to be an 18- to 24-month project, a long-term project, needed to be done in phases, one half of the bridge, then the other half of the bridge. I think we've talked about that with the board. One way to expedite that is to simply close the road, take the whole bridge out, put the bridge back, and within six months, it could be done. The issue is that you have a major detour. You're bypassing that area. The state would consider that, but only with the board's support to do so. So that's why I bring it up. All discussions to date have been that there won't be summer construction. We won't have a major detour. Road won't be closed. So that's the direction we've been heading in that. But I did want to give the board an opportunity to comment on those generally, maybe that project specifically, because that is one way to significantly speed up projects, and that would apply to nearly all the ones you've heard about tonight. There might be some other options out there as well, but at least we're thinking about what those look like in order to speed a project up. Again, we're talking on timelines of, you know, from 18 to 24 months down to six if you were to just do a project, like a bridge project, and do it all at once versus in phases. Again, the project that, so Parker's River was one example. The other one is the Bass River Bridge with Route 28. The state has not been entertaining any kind of disruption there. There's no good detour, anyway. But even if there was, it's just an impact that they have not been able to, not been willing to discuss, but certainly it would speed the project up if it was a consideration. So I throw that out there as far as just our interest in what the board's feelings might be relative to that. It's a very difficult decision, but it is one way to speed up projects. And with that said, just a summary, we're certainly interested in any project design or phasing or prioritization the board might have on any of the projects you've heard tonight or any others that might be of interest, and also on those expediting options, if there's any that you might be willing to consider. And of course, we'll be having public input, not just in forums like this, but also public information sessions that we've had on several of the projects already. Those are not 25% design hearings. There's still those needed for all those projects. So those fall in the design public hearings as well. So there's plenty of opportunity for public input, but we wanted to start that dialogue with you tonight. So with that said, that's all that I have. I'm happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
As far as project expediting, I think it's really going to be project-specific. You know, when you think about that bridge and the ambulances that come from the other towns getting through to the highway, I think it'd be very problematic to do a road closure on Route 28 like that.
I agree.
However, depending upon what they're doing, if you're looking at Old Main Street, there are several short detours that you could do in several locations, depending upon what you're doing, that where it might work. So I think you have to be project-specific on that. As far as summer construction, I think it's very difficult on our main streets to have summer construction, but, you know, one of the things that frustrates me about Massachusetts is the lack of night work. So, you know, if you could work it out where you'd have summer construction where they only work, you know, between the hours of whatever, 11, 5, 10, whatever, that might be appropriate. You know, I'm trying to think of instances on Route 28. I mean, I'm not out that late at night. I'm usually in bed, but I don't really remember the traffic after, you know, 10 o'clock being difficult and really early in the morning. So, I mean, I think to some extent, is there additional fees typically with a contractor for the night differential?
There typically would be. It has to be worked out on a project-by-project basis, but typically there would be.
Yeah. So you have to weigh whether or not that that additional construction fee outweighs the length of time, because in some cases, you know, if you're able to work, you know, year-round, then you can shorten it and perhaps do better.
Right, okay.
But as far as that goes for me, I think it's got to be case by case. I mean, we really have to look at what they're doing. As far as the priorities, I think your priorities are pretty well on track. We've talked about this several times before. I know our board has prioritized them in the past.
You have.
Obviously, things change. You know, I don't know about the Exit 8. That would be a state project, anyway. I'm with Norm. I think that we've all identified the significant issues at the Winslow Gray-South Sea Ave intersection and prioritized previously aligning that, whether or not the state, you know, the state has acknowledged that there are issues there, because I think it was VHB a few years ago that wanted to do some quick traffic light improvements that we kind of, we were hoping for to get the whole kit and caboodle. I know it's going to be very complex. But for me, I see multiple benefits to that project. The stacking up and the traffic there is consistently an issue. So we've talked about that in detail before, but I personally, and I think the other issue is sidewalks on Higgins-Kroll, I think, it being, well, I'm not sure now with Matice closing, if any of the elementary schools would, you know, that's another thing. You know, that was the biggest thing before was because Matice was there. And if Matice isn't going to be there, depending upon what's going to be there, I think that that's, you know, that's a conversation we'll have to continue to have. I'm not sure it's such a priority at this point, especially with the funding that we thought potentially would be there isn't there. But I'd love to see the town work on the Winslow Gray as a priority, in my opinion. Obviously, the current list is going forward, so we don't really need to address the stuff that's already in the queue.
Interestingly, you know, I spoke last evening at the school committee meeting about the MassDOT funding through their Safe Schools program.
Right.
And that would apply to Higgins-Kroll as well, because we'd, no matter what, we're still going to have an elementary school there, at least for some time. And, you know, so we should, that, the applications for that funding are not due now, but will be in the near future through DOT. And, you know, have contact names of people to speak with directly who'll provide application materials and so forth. And that process will be coming up. They're holding actually a public forum on it in the next few weeks, so, you know, and they're open to some fairly substantial funding.
Right.
So it would be nice to have that in the background. But, you know, I think, again, the priorities, I agree with what we've got now. Night work, I mean, I think the state did a good job, continues to do a good job with Route 6 and the night work that's being done there between Yarmouth and Orleans. You know, they've, it's been, you know, relatively faultless, and you can see significant improvements in the roadway there. So I think if they followed that model on Route 28 with work that was going to be done on Route 28, I think that that would be just fine. You know, I think the state as well is interested in not only doing sidewalks, but also bikeways. And I think they're, that seems to come into parts of their discussion with regard to Route 28 whenever they talk about Route 28 projects. So they're very sensitive to allowing for paths, more substantial pathways for bicycles. I've been wild about that concept, frankly, because of the number of ins and outs from driveways and commercial establishments and that sort of thing. But, you know, frankly, having just recently returned from France, I've seen it work in very busy areas. It needs to be planned out, but it can work. So I think that we need to take that into account.
Other comments from the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
First of all, Jeff, thanks for the presentation. I'm glad we had this briefing and this update. I think it's very helpful to periodically get these kind of updates, because it's actually nice to see MassDOT, you know, focused on our needs here in Yarmouth.
Yes.
And oftentimes, we can complain about the state, but I think by and large, this level of activity, it's refreshing. It's good to see. I think also, some of this information, I don't know if it can be put on the website, but I do think it would be helpful for people to get a kind of an idea, to easily go to a spot on the website where you can kind of know what the schedule is for some of these projects, particularly the ones on Route 28. The question that I get asked a lot on Route 28 is, for those that are, you know, passing through, and for the businesses that would like to help find ways to keep people here, is how disruptive will the traffic, will we have construction going on on several projects at the same time? That's a question that I always keep hearing about. So, for example, will the Bass River Bridge be done at the same time, the intersection's done, while the same time Parker's River is going to be done? That's the question that I get asked a lot. I don't know if you have an answer to that.
Well, if Parker's River continues on the track that it is, it should be wrapping up, if not finished, by the time the bridge intersection project begins. It really depends on when that bridge intersection project happens. There's a lot of moving pieces there, but by 2022, we certainly hope to have the Parker's River Bridge done. So that's something we're looking at relative to coordination of all the projects.
Yeah.
And we are trying to minimize multiple projects. Obviously, that might not be avoidable in some cases, but we try to avoid that.
Okay. Well, I think it's reassuring to let, at least folks that we're hearing from, to let them know that we're trying to find ways to make sure that it's the least disruptive possible, even though we want this, we want all this work to be done.
Absolutely.
As I think you're aware, I'm very involved in helping with the funding on a number of these projects. I do think it's helpful to be thinking about funding for a bike trail component in the list of list of projects. We talked about this before, connecting the drive-in site with the lateral, even if we do the planning of it, because I do think that there's going to be more bike trail money in the next highway bill. And I do think that if we can connect the drive-in site, show that there's, it's feasible, it works, there's a feasible project there, I think that can attract money as well. I think if there's a theme in these projects, and I'm sure you're working on this, but I just feel I have to state it, and that is, is the more these road projects are pedestrian-friendly and bike-friendly, I mean, it's almost, it's, I mean, we hear this a lot, but it also has an economic development upside to it as well. I very much appreciate seeing the references to economic development with a number of these projects. But I know in a lot of the transportation projects that I've worked on in other areas, that's a theme that everyone's taking seriously. I've done a lot of work in Quincy, and it's amazing the level of pedestrian-friendly activity, transportation activity, and bike-friendly activity that's going on with all those road projects. So I just wanted to emphasize that. Just one other point, and that is, of all of the future things that we need to do, I do think that the Route 6 Bass River Bridge project, I think we just need to keep it on our front burner. I know our board has mentioned it as a priority, I know the Dennis Board has made it a priority, I know the legislators have talked about it. I went underneath the bridge this past late spring, and there are missing piles, there's missing bracing, I mean, it's not, it's not a pretty sight. There are pieces of concrete that have fallen off, and there's a portion of the bridge that sags. So how this can't be a priority, at least to do the structural repairs, you know, replace the piles, put piles back, put the bracing back, you know, things that are structural that hold the bridge up, I think, you would think someone would be paying attention. So I just think we have to get back in the saddle again and just keep making noise about it. You know, one of these days, a reporter from the Cape Cod Times is going to go out there with a camera and look at and take photographs of all of the different pieces underneath that bridge that will scare some folks if they saw them.
We should let her use a kayak.
Will you give her a boat ride?
If she wants one, I'd be, I can give her the video that I have of the whole thing. But the point is, is that project, I don't think we can keep, I don't think we should stop nagging people about it.
Certainly.
Even if there's an initial phase of at least repairing and replacing the structural components of the bridge. I know they're intimidated by doing the whole thing, but something. And that's another project quite, as you know, I mean, one of the reasons why Parker's River got funded was because of the environmental impacts associated with that road improvement. I do think that the more we quantify the environmental improvements of that project, who knows, we may be able to attract other funding, like the Sandy Fish and Wildlife Service money. I'm not suggesting that Fish and Wildlife Service is ready to come in and help us fund Bass River Bridge, but having the environmental benefits does open up potential opportunities for other funding sources. So I think if we can figure out a way to help quantify those benefits, or help the state quantify them, I do think that would be a worthwhile endeavor. So with that, I yield the remainder of my time, Mr. Chairman.
Not to the left.
Mike?
I won't be needing the time. I have nothing to add to the comments of the other board members. Thank you very much for the update, Jeff.
Thank you.
All right, great.
Thanks again, Mike. Jeff. Did you need anything else from us? Do you think we provided you the guidance?
No, I think you've provided us good guidance on the projects that you'd like to see move forward, and that's been helpful, thank you.
Terrific, thank you. Okay, we're, the next item on the agenda is town-generated CPA projects.
Yeah, I was just looking.
Do you want a Red Sox score update, Mr. Chairman?
Certainly.
It's eight to two, the Red Sox.
Yep.
All right.
I was just thinking, I miss Bob Palmer. Bob Palmer used to put it on the.
I think there was a great plan.
Yep, Bob Palmer used to put it on the TV for us, yeah.
Top of the eighth, two outs.
Oh, yeah, all right. Wonderful.
I really pay attention to everything that's going on.
All right. So they got us smiling, so.
So I'm here, I put in the packet for your review, a memo that does two things. One, it gives you a list of the CPC applications that were made this year. So we had a grand total of 15 applications for about $6 million. The, you know, estimated funds that are available are right around $5 million. So I just wanted to give you, kind of traditionally, we've given you kind of the heads-up, the CPC is now meeting with applicants, interviewing them, and will be coming back to the selectmen to know what their recommendations are in terms of moving applications to the warrant. Second purpose is a more recent tradition of looking over the town-sponsored applications that have come in. And so this year, we have five applications that came from town staff or committees, and then there are two additional applications that were made that would utilize town resources, if you will, but which weren't originating from town staff or committees. So I'll just go through the list, you all have the memo. Two different historic applications. One is to do a historic preservation plan. As you know, the town has three historic properties. We could do a better job taking care of them, and the purpose of this preservation plan would be to take a look at each of the three properties, identify the, kind of the building rehab needs, look also at the utilization of the site and come up with recommendations on how we could better utilize the site. The value on that application was $30,000. We got that number working collaboratively with Sarah Kordjev, who's the historic preservation expert over at the Cape Cod Commission. She did some outreach, and the estimate was about $10,000 per property. And that would get you a kind of historic preservation expert and maybe an architect to weigh in on that. The, I don't know if you want, Mr. Chairman, if you want me to go just through all of them, or stop, or, okay. The second one is a little bit preemptive, it has to do with the Taylorbury Farm barn. If you've been up to the farm lately, you know how much work we've done on the farmhouse, with the archaeology digs, the outbuildings, the fencing for the animals, whatnot. What's really been neglected a bit is the barn. So working collaboratively with the Department of Public Works, they were able to identify some funding, and we've actually engaged coastal engineering, hiring them through our on-call list, to have them do a structural analysis. There's some concern about the structural integrity of the building. The application that we put in will use that information to help put together a more specific list of items regarding the rehab of the barn, and we're estimating that'll be about $250,000 total. Think that that project will be eligible for some funding through the Mass Historic Commission.
So this $200,000 includes the work itself?
That would include the work.
It's not just design work?
Yes, it's not just engineering and design. A lot of it does hinge on what coastal engineering has to say with us.
How big is the barn?
How big is the barn? Gosh, I don't know, Jeff, do you know? I think it would be maybe 20 by 40.
Okay.
And it's two stories, there's, you know, different space in there, which is utilized for different purposes.
Right.
If you take a walk around the barn, and I did just give you kind of a snapshot on the application, I didn't give you the full application, I'm happy to share those with you if you'd like them. We have some pretty good photos that highlight the level of disrepair.
Okay.
Third application is a, it's become an annual application. This is from the Yarmouth Affordable Housing Trust, and this is to just support programming in general, it helps support staffing of the various programs. The trust has done a great job over the last few years developing a number of affordable housing programs. In general, the trust works with RFPs, Request for Proposals, takes the funding that's available, and puts it out for some very creative and diverse housing initiatives. The fourth application, and Pat Armstrong is here tonight as well, is Flax Pond Phase 3B, and this is for design and engineering to finish out Flax Pond, finish everything else that's in there. As Jeff had mentioned, we did focus on the pickleball, the pickleball pieces moving forward, I think that was one element of the master plan for Flax Pond. This will help finish out the remaining endeavors. This will include, and correct me, Pat, tennis and basketball courts, volleyball, some additional walkways, natural turf field, irrigation benches, shade structures, landscaping site amenities, and some storm water control and infrastructure. The last application that came from town-sponsored groups, and this was on behalf of the Drive-In Site Utilization Committee, and we do have the chairman here tonight to help answer any questions. As part of their most recent charge that was endorsed by the Board of Selectmen, one of their responsibilities was to identify funding to help carry out the recommended option. That included the Riverwalk Park and the small, small boardwalk that was really just the loop. So the committee, using the information that was put together by staff and our consultants Beta, have put in an application for $3.7 million, and that is approximately 50%? Kathy, I'm looking at you.
It's 100% for design and permitting, and then 50% of the construction cost for the park and loop.
Thanks.
Where's the matching funds from?
There's a whole list in the application that identifies potential other grant funding sources. I think it was included in the excerpts.
Yes. The idea here is, is we know we need to advance the project by doing the design and engineering that's required. By looking for some of the construction costs, it gives us, like it did with the Parker's River Bridge, or it gives us with Baxter-Grismill, a real advantage when we go looking to other sources for funding to show that the town has committed substantial resources towards the project. It just, it will help carry along. It's a big request, but it's a big project. I don't know if you want me to stop there, or I can give mention to the two, not quite town-sponsored, but town-involved, because one does stem off of Jeff's conversation with two, and Dick Martin, who was the sponsor of the Open Space acquisition, there's a request for funding, and it's already begun, the internal review, with the Conservation Commission and the Open Space Committee, Christine Marzighliano's here as well, is to acquire a parcel of land that's on Starbuck Lane. I think it's about six acres big, it does about some town property, and provides a wildlife corridor.
What is the, how much do we receive in taxes on that property?
Oh, I don't know off the top of my head. Dick, do you recall?
I don't know.
Do you want to come up?
I think it's about $3,000.
Okay. Yeah, it was, it's appraised, I think, or assessed around, was it 280?
Yeah, maybe.
So that's about right.
Okay.
The assessment is exactly, just 270, actually, something.
Is there some reason for conservation? Is there some reason that's being specific for that purpose? So then that, the use of that property would be severely restricted for the future?
It would be. It would be taken for open space, and you'd put a conservation restriction on it.
Okay. We have an awful lot of land in this town that is dedicated forever to either wellfields or conservation.
Understand. And it is adjacent to wellfields, so it's, it has, there's a lot of points to be made about it. The other application, and Tom Barron is here tonight, Tom Barron was the sponsor, Tom's a member of our planning board and other committees, zoning board of appeals comes to mind. Tom's been an advocate of the bike path concept and connecting to the drive-in site. We have begun looking at that concept, and with assistance through the Cape Cod Commission and our district local technical assistance grant, we have begun looking at the potential location and types of bike paths that could connect the Cape Cod rail trail down to the drive-in site. Tom's application could conceivably help, it wasn't something that we've discussed internally, and, you know, I think it would behoove us to do so.
So these applications have already been made?
These applications have been made.
Any board questions at this point?
Does staff take our goals at all to figure out which applications they're going to apply for?
I think staff does, and I mean, I certainly, I can speak for the historic ones, and the historic ones are protecting our historic assets, which contribute to economic development and tourism, quality of life, those types of things. Affordable housing remains a goal of the Board of Selectmen. I think Flax Pond and recreational opportunities that benefit the community and all ages, ditto, and the drive-in site as well. I think they're all consistent with the board's goals.
Further questions or comments?
I appreciate the briefing, Karen, this is very helpful. And I was pleased to see on the bike trail, I'm sorry I missed this, but that you have a fairly ambitious effort underway to look at that. So I apologize for missing that, and I think that's terrific, and I know Tom's done a lot of work, so I give him some credit for helping keep this on the front burner. Thank you, Tom. Yeah, I think, from my point of view, I do think this is reflective, I think the drive-in site is a priority, and I'm glad to see a very robust request here to move this along. I agree with your assessment. If we show that we've got the money set aside for the permitting, the design, and moving that forward, and we have money set aside for construction, it only enhances our ability to get the matching dollars and funds, so I think that's a very smart move. Some people may look at it, and they may look at the large number there, but I do think that there is a huge upside to that. A while ago, when we got some federal money for the Packet's Landing project, and I was involved in that, it was, the bucket of money that we secured the funding from was called Transportation Enhancements, all right? So when we think about the drive-in site, let's not think of it just as eligible for parking, or, excuse me, conservation or recreation funding, but if we do the right things there, we can actually open up the door for transportation-related funding. And as we all know, that's a big bucket of funding. That's one of the other reasons why I suggested the bike trail connection there, even if it's shown on the plan, it may open the door for some money there. So beyond that, no, I think it's a great report, great recommendation, terrific update, well done, thank you.
Okay, Mike?
I just had one question. On the Riverwalk Park and Boardwalk, it mentions that the funding would be for design permitting and partial construction. Is there any quantifiable amount of construction that was discussed, or how, you know, what does that partial construction entail?
I'm going to call on Kathy for details.
As part of the feasibility and concept design study, Beta did a detailed construction cost estimate for both the Riverwalk Park with all the different amenities that we had talked about, as well as the Boardwalk. So it's basically half of that estimated amount of money from the feasibility study.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have. That's all I have.
Okay. Great. Yeah, I'm happy as well to see the, us move forward with the Riverwalk loop and, and the event space. I think, you know, we're going to see more and more interest in that site as time moves on, and as we get things underway, I think it'll, it'll accelerate.
That's great stuff.
So, you know, if we can move things forward, that'd be great, so.
I'm just going to ask for next year. Maybe we can get a splash pad. For the fifth year, I'll ask.
Can we?
You heard, you know, I thought we had.
I'm going to sit down now.
I thought it was our priority. We talked about it in our goals, but.
And, you know, I thought we'd already allocated money.
We did.
We returned the $22,000 that we had allocated for the design because it was to decide if we should do it at Parker's River or Sandy Pond. And when it was decided it was going to be in part of Sandy Pond, then we couldn't use the money to then decide it at Sandy Pond, because the purpose, as stated, was to decide what was the better location. So the CPC felt that it wasn't an appropriate use, so I happily returned the $22,000 to the committee, and we didn't use it. And at town meeting in May, $275,000 was allotted for the design and engineering for Sandy Pond, and that's being worked on now by CDM, our on-call in-house. And so we're not ready to put the splash pad in this year, so that's why I didn't put it up, because I didn't want to ask it and hold off on the money. But it is the first priority before any other things will happen at Sandy is the splash pad. But with the transition of my position to Director of Community Services, the construction of, the construction of different parks and elements are no longer really under my jurisdiction, and I'm trying to wrap up the things that I'm doing without asking, without Mr. Colby having to take on projects that he's not ready to handle because of other larger projects, as you just saw tonight, on his list, and not having an Assistant DBW Director, it's hard. So I didn't want to tie up CPC money for four or five years if we're not ready, and it's not going to be that long, but, but the splash pack is the first priority.
I just have to say on it, because I don't know if you know how many years it took the dog park to happen. I think it was about 20. So if I don't bring it up every year.
Yes, ma'am. I hear you.
And make, add another voice to that. I'm a great supporter. I've seen very successful ones in other communities, and, you know, just, and it's a great attraction and a great local benefit in terms of parks development. It's just, you know, I, I think it'll increase the utilization of our local parks significantly. So, and, and perhaps increase pedestrian traffic within the town to get to those parks. So, you know, hopefully we can move ahead quickly, so.
You may want a transcript of this meeting.
Make a promise for Jeff.
I won't say what I was thinking. All right. All right, we don't have any further comments at this point on our CPA projects. We'll move ahead with a three-minute presentation on the Matrix follow-up report from YPD.
I think it's YF.
YF, YPD. Yeah, three, yes, I know, three minutes, is that, is that enough?
How long did it?
Three minutes?
Sure.
All right. Actually, I look at the clock, you get 10, so.
Well, thank you for allowing us to come in tonight and talk about this findings of the study. The deputy chief is going to be putting up the recommendations on the fireside, and we can look at what we agree with and what we don't agree with. They should be in your packet as well. You should have the study recommendations, as well as a memo from me pertaining mainly to the dispatch disagreements. But there are several things that we'd like to illustrate that we do agree with, with the study.
It's a staple to the back of the memo that the chief has got there, that's like the.
Like this. Should have some red highlights on it that we can expand on if you have any questions on that. Okay. So towards the beginning, I'd like to introduce Deputy Chief Sawyer. He is the Chief of Operations. He's going to talk about the first things on the recommendations with regard to response times and benchmarking and such.
So real quick on, on the list, the first five items, excuse me, six items, are kind of all grouped together. And I just want to say that for years now, we've been able to monitor all these benchmarks that they're talking about, but we haven't put them all together. So with the help of IT, namely John Morse, we get, chief and I will get emailed reports on, say, response times, the time an ambulance is at the hospital, stuff we measure, and we look at to see if we could maybe improve on things. Excuse me. What the report is saying, and I had to ask the, the gentleman that we worked with on the report, Mr. Finn, I believe was his name, was, how do you show, how do you compile it and show? Because that's, that's what they're saying. You set a standard for yourselves, and then you measure yourself against that standard quarterly, and then report it annually. So, actually, I never got an answer from him, so Google helped me. So we're, we're working on this, and it's something that I think we could post, you know, on our website and our Facebook page, to show what our standard is for response for all these items. And then in, in our annual report to the town, we can list that as well. So we're just measuring ourselves. So it's really an easy thing, and we agree with all those items.
Also, to expand on that, I'd like to say that there were no issues as far as extrapolating data from the fire department's computer systems. We're very well off in the tech world. With the help of John Morse and IT, we've got a great system, and our data is very well documented in our systems. And it was very easy for the study people to extrapolate that from our system. So kudos to our IT department as well. They have been a huge help to us, as well as the deputy chief. The next item on there is the additional firefighter positions and four lieutenants positions. They also talk about an 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM peak hour shift. The data had identified a peak hour shift of run volume from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, where we have several simultaneous runs going on at the same time, and we don't have enough people to handle that workload. We do agree with the concept of adding more personnel, and I know you've heard me say it for several years, that, you know, we're looking to adds, incrementally add more personnel because of our continuing growing run volume. The eight-hour peak shift model is new to us, and I suppose it could work. There are some departments on the Cape that have a day shift schedule for certain individuals to help them during that. It's similar to the peak shift hour. It's very difficult, though, other than the data that we showed, to predict when we're going to have that, you know, it could happen after midnight, it could happen at, you know, 9:30. We could have, you know, five, six simultaneous runs and not have those individuals available to go. Personally, I'd like to see it around the clock. I think, I think we're going to continue to grow as this town grows and, you know, economical, economic development grows, there's going to be more people coming to this town. We've got an increasing run volume, and honestly, I think we need the people 24/7. Our shift coverage is based on 10s and 14s. Years ago, before we switched to 24-hour shifts, we worked two 10-hour days, two 14-hour nights, and then off of four. So our vacation, sick, personal time, as well as overtime shifts, when an individual gets hired, is based on a 10-hour day or a 14-hour night. So it would be a little bit challenging with this 12-hour shift on how we would disseminate that shift coverage if there were individuals missing from that particular group. Just one thing that we recognized from, and we had mentioned that to the study gentleman. I know it's, it's popular in other areas around the country, and in police as well, but certainly not out of the question. We certainly could take a strong look at it, and if that's the board's pleasure. There would be a negotiation with the bargaining unit to facilitate that. Next would be appoint a strategic planning committee to do annual updates on the department's strategic plan. We agree with that. We, last time we did a strategic plan was, I believe, in 2009, 2010. So we're due to do it again and take a hard look at our organization and make sure we're on track. So this is an annual update. They're recommending an amount of overtime estimated to be less than 10,000. We wouldn't be able to absorb that currently in our current structure, so we'd be an additional ask in the budget.
I got the next one?
Yep.
So the next one's about our policies and reviewing our policies. Were we agree to the, the concept of, you know, reviewing policies? We feel that we have been doing it, so we agree to it. The quarterly is a little, little ridiculous, so what we do, every time we hire a new employee, the, the review, they're assigned in the first two weeks orientation to review all the policies. Well, that's done with the training of the shift, so they work two, two weeks during the day shift. So the, in essence, touch every shift. So every shift is involved in teaching the new employee the policies. So, and policies are, our policies are, it's almost like a living thing. They're always, we're always changing them, adapting, eliminating. The way we post them in, on the Intranet is, it puts a date as to when they're created. So I think when they did the, the survey, a lot of people see the date of 2014. A lot of the guys see the date of 2014. But from the key holder, who, who creates new policies and puts them in and reviews them and, and has the officers review them, that date doesn't change. It's just, it doesn't mean that they weren't updated. So to that end, the last, the last time we had all the shift captains review all of our policies, we have about 90 policies, was probably about two years ago. So we, just this week, we invited up the policies, and mostly the shift, the four shift captains, and a few specialized guys like the EMS supervisor would do the EMS ones and so forth. So they're all being reviewed now, and that should be done in about a week. So, and we would hope to do that, say formally, or put something in writing for a rule to say that that happens once a year, a formal type review. But they're always a living thing. They're always being changed.
Do you want to advance that slide to the second one?
Yeah, sorry. That's okay. So next, their recommendation to convert the EMS training supervisor to a captain's position. We can do that already without, you know, he's, he's eligible, once he's been a lieutenant for four years, to test for the position of captain, and we could elevate him to a captain's position, similar to what we do in fire prevention. Fire prevention originally were, was two lieutenants. The way we envision it is that you have a captain and a lieutenant in a division. The captain's kind of in charge of that division. So we would love to do the same thing in the training division. The training division, we have one individual who is totally overwhelmed with just the EMS requirements alone to maintain all of our members and the certifications and, you know, maintaining all the ambulances, the supplies. He's, he's really overwhelmed, and he's also, he, he trains the on-call firefighters, the CERT team, he's part of the regional sheltering program. He's got a lot on his plate already. And fire training has been very difficult for him to manage as well on top of everything else he does. But administratively, it, it would work well to have a captain training officer in charge of a division, and a lieutenant training officer in there as well. So there's two people in that division, so you have almost a division head that reports to the administration when we have a captain's meeting. And then the lieutenant would either run EMS or run fire, or vice versa, or they'd be synonymous, they would help each other. But it's a huge deficiency in training, we feel is very important at our department. And, you know, we're doing the best we can with the run volume, and the guys, every single day, they try to do some form of training, but it's always interrupted because of, we're so busy with simultaneous runs. Next is ensure shift personnel involved in the development of annual training and maximize their input. So that's currently being done as well. We do have a yearly training calendar, and the shifts do have input and make suggestions to the training officer on specific things related to EMS and fire. We do do two days a year, spring and fall, full days, days of training at the Barnstable County Fire Training Facility. And last year, we did an EMS full day where they were able to get recertification points as well off-duty and not be interrupted, which was fantastic, and we got a lot of positive feedback on that. Historically, we've been doing the live burn training. We've done that several years in a row, and the members expressed a concern about, you know, maybe changing it up a little bit and doing some EMS, and that, that worked out really well. So we're, we're constantly doing that and monitoring that. The next is develop training programs designed to help prevent on-duty injuries. We agree, we're looking into that as well. I mean, a big thing was, was purchasing those stretchers and other equipment to help reduce injuries. We're always constantly looking at that, and training goes along with that. So the new, the new stretcher lift systems, hopefully, will, will start to show its effects in the next few years, and hopefully we'll, we'll have some reduced injuries. The guys really enjoy having those new stretchers for the, for the lifting, especially with the larger patients that we're dealing with sometimes. So it has, it's going to have an effect, it's just going to take a few years to, to see the benefits of that. So we're constantly looking at that as well, to buy any of the other pieces of equipment out there that's going to help them do their job better, and that's a big priority of ours. Yeah, well, just an update on, you know, we're, we're currently short some, some individuals. We're seven short currently as we speak. Unfortunately, four out on, on line-of-duty injury, one's deployed on military leave, and two are out on extended sick leave. So we're, you know, we're feeling it right now, we're being seven guys short out of the, out of the group, so the overtime's feeling it as well, as well as the, then we're not really sharing the workload, so, you know, we need more, we need more people to, to help with that, so. Let's see. Next was, it says plan to finish out Station 3 upstairs. I, I took a hard look at this for a long time, and originally, Station 3 was supposed to be built to be a new headquarters someday. And unfortunately, back in the day, the current board back then reduced the size of that building significantly. It was supposed to be a four-bay building in a larger square footage footprint to be a new headquarters someday. They wanted to keep the cost down back in the day, and I totally understand that, and it was appropriate during that time. That was in '06, '07. That was a tough time for the town and finances, and we were lucky to get that station. It's currently, I believe, undersized to become a new headquarters, in our opinion. But as far as the 4,000 square feet of available space upstairs, it would make an ideal place for, for a dispatch center, in my, our opinion, as well as a training room, as well as administrative offices for dispatch. So my recommendation, that's why I put a disagreement on that, I think it should be utilized for, that's where the new dispatch center should go. And I'll expand more on that later in the, in the study.
The, the next two are about utilizing, utilizing the retention rules for records and digitizing fire department records. We've asked to be put on the list for the scanners to come over and scan all of our paper records. We have a lot, but once they're scanned, it'll give us, just like the building apartment, once they're scanned in, in a system, then we can, we can maintain and ask new stuff can then just scan and put them in. And of course, we'll work with the town clerk. of course, we'll work with the town clerk. And we do get the memos on what records to retain and, and stuff like that. And the administrative staff follows those things. So I think we're, we're pretty good as far as those two items go.
Okay, the next thing is, it says negotiate collective bargaining group to reclassify the second captain position in fire prevention to lieutenant. I think the gentleman from the study did not understand when we explained this procedure to him. It's very similar to what I described earlier with the training officer. So the only way we have two captains in fire prevention is if a shift captain, one of the four shift captains decides to change his career and go into fire prevention. We're not going to demote that individual to go into fire prevention. That wouldn't make any sense. So if we already have one current captain that we had, like Captain Armstrong and Captain Huck, who was the current shift captain, he decided he wanted to go into fire prevention to change his career. So that's the only circumstance we would have to. But currently, so since Captain Armstrong has retired, we have one captain, which is Captain Huck now, and Lieutenant Smith now has moved in from the shift lieutenant position into the fire prevention. So I think when we tried to explain that to the matrix study people, they didn't really understand that, that concept that, you know, we didn't have to really change that and negotiate that change.
Yep. The next one's the Acela permitting program. So you see in the red says waiting for demo. We've had the demo and we like what we've seen. So we're going to be using Acela for our burn permit program, which currently falls under bonsai. And that's a seasonal thing. So we have until, we'll put it all together and it'll go into effect. We'll start using it in January. As far as for doing inspections, we understand that using that same program would help the building department on their side. But on our side, our current system, our current programs that we use supports our CAD, the dispatching software. So when the inspectors go out and say a, a new business occupancy, they'll go out and they'll, they'll put in the, the owner, the phone contact, emergency contact, backup, all that kind of stuff. And they load it into the inspection report. Once they get back to the station, that's put into a program we call Firehouse Software. Firehouse Software supports the CAD, Symposium Software and Dispatch. So by the inspectors inspecting in, in the field, it populates the information to the trucks on emergencies. So when the officers are out, they can utilize that information. The problem with Acela going to Acela would, in, in that part of it, would be an integration. Would, can it integrate? Would there be a cost to integrate? Which there would be. So, but in thinking about this, maybe there's something where we could do, where we could use both. So we own Firehouse. It's a very cheap software to maintain. The support is, is the least expensive out of anything we have. And we're always looking for software programs like Acela to make our jobs easier. So we're still looking into that. Any questions on that?
The next is, under fleet and facilities, enhance the apparatus replacement program to contain benchmarks and measurable components for the planned replacement of apparatus. Basically, yeah, we agree with that. It just means we have to, we need to replace some of our apparatus sooner. The last pumper we got rid of was in 1986. It was over 30 years old. What they identified is we're probably keeping our equipment and our vehicles a little bit too longer. And that's also been identified with the other program that came out with the capital budget process this year. That's identifying the vehicle replacement schedules as well. We just have to be cautious of that because the ambulance reserve appropriation is what our, what funds our capital. So we've been very good at, you know, trying to keep that level of replacement so we don't over exceed that. Because a good portion of that reserve appropriation goes to wages and overtime. And the remaining 500 to 600 is where I try to keep it. And there's going to be highs and lows. That's for our capital needs. But we'll have some years where we're in the 300 range. And we'll have some years where we'll be high in, you know, over 500 or 600. But we try to measure that ahead of time in 10-year blocks and make sure that we're not exceeding what we're taking in for the ambulance revenue. As far as, the next thing was relocate fire prevention administration to three. Well, we talked about that earlier. Again, we're, we're looking at utilizing that space. We feel it's, it's more appropriate to use it for dispatch. And I, and I wrote a possible consolidation to look at in the future. And I'm going to bring it up that Station One was built in the 30s, 40s, added on to, again, three, four times it was added on to. With the new flood plain maps that have come out, Station One now is going to be in the, it's in the flood zone now. So long-term, long-range, we're going to need to look at something else for that, for the South Yarmouth area. So one thought, years ago, it was looked at, is building, once, before they built Station Three, they, they analyzed it. They hired a study company. They looked at potentially building something in the center of town. So basically, the center point of the town is about Old Town House and West Yarmouth Road, Forest Road, West, Old Town House in that area would give you the center of the town. I think long-range, it would be a good idea to look at potentially closing one and two and building something new in the center of town. And I know the study gentleman didn't agree with that. They know that our response times on the outer periphery of the circle would suffer a little bit. But it's not really an accurate measurement because he didn't take into consideration when Station Two was out on a call and there's nobody there. And it's being serviced all the way across from South Yarmouth, which is a 12 to 14-minute run when they're not there. It's the same thing in West Yarmouth when they're not there. If you went to a two-station model, you keep West Yarmouth the way it is. You take the shift of members and you, you put six in West Yarmouth. You put the remainder at, at the main station in the center of town. Now, you cover one and two and three from the center of town when the, when the other station is busy. Station Three is, is a good substation and it should be maintained and it should be kept up. But I think we should look at the long-range plan down the road about, you know, we could potentially be in trouble here in South Yarmouth if we get a, a significant storm that just like what just hit the Panhandle. And I hate to even bring that up because that's just catastrophic down there. But if something like that was to come up here, Station One would be very vulnerable.
The, the next one's implement an online submittal process for plan review. We've allowed digital plan submission back when I was a fire inspector, six or eight years ago. The difficulties we have is, in larger projects, we like to have one copy of a paper plan. So we're not opposed to this. We only do commercial, we only review commercial properties. If the building department had, had a program where people could submit it, where we could get access to review it, we would only ask that large projects that we provided with, with a plan. It's much easier to see the big paper ones than it is to review stuff on a computer.
The next thing is continue involvement in regional teams and services. That's a huge benefit to us on the Cape. No one fire department can handle emergencies to, with technical rescue dive or even hazardous materials on their own. We just don't have the available resources to handle that. So the regional approach is fantastic. We're, we're members of the county dive rescue team as well as the technical rescue team. And we're very fortunate. We house the Mass District One hazmat truck in Yarmouth at Station Three. So we have that asset available and about $200,000 worth of equipment on that vehicle. At our disposal, we have two members on the state hazmat team as well. So, and that's 100% reimbursed by the state, by Department of Fire Services. That truck covers pretty much all of southeastern Mass with a group of other trucks. So our members drive that to a vehicle anywhere in District One, which is southeastern Mass. And the Commonwealth reimburses Yarmouth Fire and the town of Yarmouth 100% for backfill while those gentlemen are gone, if they're on duty, as well as pay those individuals overtime if they're off duty and they respond. And we, it doesn't cost us anything and we get the benefit of the truck. So it's a huge benefit for us to, and Deputy Chief Kelleher deserves a lot of credit from that years ago. He had, he had, he was the head guy on District One back in the day. And we had no assets, and even close to Cape Cod. And they finally got something in Bourne and then in Yarmouth. So it's very fortunate for us to have that down here. All right, next was the consolidation of the dispatch operations. And I've said it before, I'm not opposed to consolidating. It just needs to be done correctly and needs to be in the, in the right facility. And so we feel very strongly that Station Three upstairs would make an ideal, even a regional communication site down the road where we can invite other towns that aren't in a regional setup already with the sheriff, that are kind of out there on their own with firefighters working dispatch still. We could benefit from possibly taking those communities in. And benefit from that would be, we would open up more funding from the state 911 grant. We have the room upstairs to do that. It was cited. In 2011, they studied regional dispatch on Cape Cod. And I have a document from a company called Intertech that cited Station Three upstairs as an ideal mid-Cape regional communication site. It also said it was capable of housing up to 12 consoles with an EOC and training rooms and administrative offices. It had the proper infrastructure. It was the proper construction. And it would have the right infrastructure, as I said, the, the tower and the cabling and the, what's the new, I'm drawing a blank on the new, the new cabling that went through the whole county there.
Open Cape.
Open Cape. Thank you. Thank you very much. That, with that also in, in place as well.
Do you think the estimated cost of something that would be? Do you have an idea?
I don't have an idea. I can certainly get that for the board if that's something that you'd like me to pursue. I think it's a, it's a good option. Station Three was built in '07. It's a masonry hurricane three-proof building. It's a hardened facility. The other option is not. It's a, the police building is not a hardened facility. It's stated in the study on page 78. It is vulnerable to natural and man-made disasters. I have a hard time moving our dispatch to a building that doesn't meet the requirements of an EOC or a 911 center, to be honest with you.
EOC is at the, is at the police department?
I'm sorry?
Our EOC now is at the police.
I know. Yeah. And we, and we've had issues during an operation there.
You have a generator on Station Three?
Yes. Yep. So a lot of the stuff, I did give you a memo and I gave that to Mr. Knappick, the town administrator, and you have that in your packet as well. It specifically addresses each of the items listed in the matrix study regarding everything they recommended to, to go to the police facility. You know, we feel, like I said, we feel very strongly that, you know, we're looking to the future. They're recommending temporary solutions and spending money on temporary solutions and then looking at a facility later on, either as a regional partner somewhere else or being a host of a regional thing. We have the facility. We have the building. We have the space. I, I think we should be looking towards that now. Why spend the money twice is, is what we're thinking. So, did you, did you get a chance to read that memo in your packets or do you want me to go through it?
No.
Okay. Because I know, in interest of time, I will, I will stop there and entertain any questions.
I think we probably have to set a date to make a decision and work back from there.
Okay. That's fair. Yeah.
I'm not sure what that is at this point. But, you know, we've visited this question and this, and the decision on that for a couple of years at least. I mean, it's been hanging over everybody's head. It needs to get done at some point. And, you know, we didn't hear convincing evidence that there was going to be any significant savings. Rather, we heard, you know, better response. And, and so, you know, I think, you know, whatever solution we come up with, we've got to consider all the things, including the things that you've, you've outlined here. But I think we have to give ourselves a, a time deadline and, and move forward with it. So otherwise, not me. I won't be here another 10 years talking about it, but, but you guys might be. So anyways, Mark, do you have any, any questions?
No, I, I appreciate having the, the chief and getting a chance to get into this conversation a little bit more fully. I think we need to have a separate conversation about, you know, where do we go from here and how do we get there?
Agreed.
Yeah. And I think rather, that's not, tonight's not tonight.
No, that's why I wanted to stop.
Yeah. No, no, no. I think we have to do that. And you have to have some general sense in terms of how we're going to tackle this. So, thank you.
Great. Bye.
I just want to know what your views are in terms of, there be a relay of calls whether the central dispatch was with you or with the police department, correct?
Correct.
So assuming it's with the police department and they're relaying medical calls, and I think you said before that about 85% of the runs are thereabout are medical as opposed to fire?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
All right. So what if any effect, well, first question would be, what would be the relay time if, if a call were to come in, for example, through the police station and then be sent to you, let's say, just for sake of discussion, on a heart attack victim? What would be that, that period of time, additional time that it would take? And what effect or what public interest might be at stake either, either way?
Okay. So currently, the way it works is the, the police station's the answering point. If it's a medical or fire call, they transfer it to us. There could be a 30-second to as much as a minute to two-minute delay depending on the person. If the person asks the same questions, if it's a cell call, it goes to the state police. They transfer it to YPD. They may ask the same questions that the state police person just asked. Because oftentimes, when it finally gets to the fire department, the person asking for help is very frustrated. So we've gotten better with that. The state police recently has been sending the cell call directly to the fire department when it's a medical call, which has sped up the process and gotten our ambulance on the road quicker. So the whole name of the game is to get these guys out the door as quick as possible. If, you know, if it's a, if it's a priority one cardiac arrest, then yeah, absolutely. We, we appreciate the, everybody in town that responds, other, you know, police, natural resources, anyone that's available in that instance with an AED. The majority of them are not priority ones. They're priority twos, which is chest pain, difficulty breathing, a possible stroke. That makes up the majority of our calls, falls. So when it's just chest pain and not a cardiac arrest, it's very important to get that ambulance on the road quickly because time is heart muscle. And the quicker we get those guys out the door to that call, we're saving heart muscle. So in my opinion, we should be answering the phone. We should be the lead agency. The majority of the 911 calls are for EMS in this town. We've analyzed the data. The data is out there. And I want to get that ambulance on the road as quick as possible to help the citizens and visitors of this town.
When you say the majority of the calls are EMS calls, are you talking about the majority of calls that come into the fire station? Are you talking about the majority?
All of the 911, the majority of all the 911s that come into Yarmouth. The majority of them, over 70%, close to 75% are for fire and EMS. The data is, is there.
And where does that data come from? I mean, who?
That's state 911.
That's state?
Mm-hmm.
State information. You mentioned about the, the building, the quality of the building and an Intertech study, I think you said was done in 2011?
Yes, sir.
Did the consultant that did this report, did he have that study? Was that provided for him?
Yes, he chose not to use it.
Okay. And can you, you, if I hear you correctly, you called it a, a masonry hardened facility?
Correct.
I get the numbers mixed up on the stations. That's three?
Station Three, yeah.
West Yarmouth Road.
So what I have here, I have two facility reports. One for Station Three, one for YPD. One for Station 3, one for YPD. The facility report.
And where did those come from?
That came from the Matrix study.
The 2011 study?
No.
Oh, for the study.
The current one we just had done.
I just want to see what you refer.
Yeah, so this is what I was referencing. And it says, you know, the PD facility is not classified as a hardened facility. A hardened facility is one that is constructed to standards well beyond minimum building codes for performance during natural or man-made disasters.
All right. What's the significance of that in your view of having a hardened facility as opposed to the alternative?
I can only give you an example from personal experience. We had a moderate tropical storm years ago. We were in an EOC operation in the second floor conference room at the police station, and the windows blew in during the storm during the EOC operation. And we had rainwater pouring in the building. There's since been shutters, if you notice, on the outside of YPD upstairs. They've put shutters on the exterior of the building for protection. I didn't feel confident there in running the EOC operation. Again, we would have been better off in a masonry structure here, the basement of Town Hall. If you look around the country, EOCs sometimes are put subgrade in below grade because of that threat, more in the middle of the country where they have more of the tornado threats. We have the big hurricane threat here. That's where we're vulnerable, sitting out, sticking out in the water. We've been very fortunate, we haven't had anything since '91. I was here for '91, knock on wood. It was, a lot of you were here for '91, and it was pretty devastating for here. Not structurally, but it was only 90 miles an hour. You get something like hit the panhandle just recently. I could tell you right now, my Station 1, 2 are going to have problems because they're wood frame buildings. Station 1's partially masonry. Station 3 will be intact. It's a station, it's a masonry hurricane three proof reinforced. So in our opinion, we need to be protected because at the end of the day, the 911 center and the EOC still needs to be functioning after the, after whatever disaster comes our way. And that's how I have to look at it as the fire chief.
I don't know if you can answer this enough, but backing up against that example of the call coming in for either a priority one or two?
Yep.
You usually, we use the example of a one being a heart attack and two being like symptomatic of perhaps a heart attack?
Correct.
Chest pain or something like that. Is there any kind of medical standard or EMT standard in terms of what the ideal response time is to those kinds of?
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, you want to get there in under five minutes or you're going to start having, you know, brain effects.
Under five minutes for which one, both or one or the other?
For the priority ones, yeah. For unresponsive cardiac arrest or not breathing, so.
And what about the two? Is there any standard on that?
Not really, no. It's important though, especially if it's cardiac related, it's very important to get there quickly and get care initiated quickly so you're not doing damage to the heart muscle. And we've had cardiologists come into our department to teach our paramedics, and they've been fantastic. And they, they expressed the same concerns about heart muscle doing damage, having chest pain for a significantly long period of time before a cardiac arrest where you go unconscious. How important it is to intervene and get care and get IVs and drugs onboard and everything else in a rapid transport to the hospital before you cardiac arrest. So yeah, it's important or you're doing heart muscle damage.
We could provide the national standards to you for response times.
I'd like to, if you have that information, I'd like to see that.
Sure.
Do you have these cardiologists come in regularly or?
We try to have different doctors come in. They do a thing called M&amp;M rounds, which take calls from different departments and the medical director comes in, sits with the crews and goes over the calls. And what went great, what didn't go so great. And it's a great teaching tool to have the physician from the medical director from Cape Cod Hospital, Jake Kroll, come in and sit with our members and go over runs. And then we invite other departments come and we get recertification points for it. The cardiologist was specific to EKGs and reading EKGs and different rhythms as well as talking about the heart-related medical calls as well. So he's only been in, I think, twice? Yeah, twice. Difficult to get, but it's a huge benefit to get him when we do.
He volunteers.
He volunteered to come in, yeah.
Thank you.
Which is fantastic for our department.
Yeah, sure. You bet.
So.
Good. Tracy?
Well, I agree with Norm. At some point in time, we need to make a decision. And I think we're in the collection of data process now. I think that it's been shown, as Norm said, that it'll reduce response times, which ultimately I think should be our goal. So the question was left, where? You know, when I read your memo, I think the biggest thing about structuring a new facility really is the operational component, not necessarily the where as much as how it's operated. And when I read this, you say that it should be somebody who already works for the town, but not the, not the fire, police chief. So that's you, right?
No. My best recommendation and the best ones that I've gone and visited is a standalone facility with its own independent, I'm going to call him a division head of communications. It's not the police chief, it's not the fire chief. Those have been the best models I've seen.
I agree with that.
And it's its own entity, it has its own supervision, its own budget. Police and fire have operational input, and those have been the best models that I've gone out and looked at. Some of them are standalones, some of them are in the facility or the department that has the better facility. So I'll give you an example, Westboro Fire Department. They have a brand-new station. They're the PSAP. They merged the dispatch in the fire station. Duxbury Fire Station built a brand-new fire station. They have the PSAP now. They've become a regional partner. So now they're getting $350-plus thousand from the state to fund their operation because they took in Plimpton as a regional partner. Westboro was taking another community in. And we could do that here because there's departments out there, smaller departments out there that have either firefighter, paramedic, working dispatch, whereas better suited on the ambulance.
So we've been going about this for a lot of years. And there was a Cape Cod Regional Group that wanted a mid-Cape PSAP. And it couldn't go anywhere because the funding wasn't there because the county got it.
The sheriff got it.
Yeah, well, he's the county, right?
He's not the county, he's the state.
Barnstable County.
No, but yeah, he's a state entity now, the sheriff is. He's not, he's not, even though he's the Barnstable County Sheriff, he's under the control of the governor for the dispatch center.
So I find it interesting that you think that the natural resources should be part of your dispatch.
Yes. Because we dispatch the harbor masters currently today.
So how does that work? Where's the call come in for that?
That comes into their office, I believe. I don't, we'd have to reroute it somehow to us if it's.
In the alternative to Mike's question, what would be the saving time if it was, say, at Station 3? You wouldn't have the delay because you'd all be working together. So one call. And if it was police service, they'd be automatically dispatched, it wouldn't be transferred again, right? So we'd cut out the transfer?
Yes.
Either way.
I've always said I'm not opposed to combining. I've never said that I'm not, you know, I think combining will work if it's done correctly. And like I said earlier, the best model is its own supervision, its own stand-up facility, its own budget. They hire, they fire, they train. Police and fire have operational input. The other thing that works well, you have, you have a captain today who's on a piece in this town. He's on the second ambulance and making decisions while he's driving the ambulance to the hospital. The dispatcher's calling him for an issue that falls outside the realm of a normal response. And he's asking that captain, what would you like me to do? And he's driving the ambulance with a patient in the back to the hospital. That captain shift commander needs to be in his own vehicle and be a shift commander for this town. And he can make the dispatch upgrade or downgrade response. So Hyannis is doing it today. They put their captain off the piece, they put him in an SUV in a command vehicle, similar to the deputies in mine, with the command center in the back. And he's making decisions when there's a problem and a mistake from the dispatch center. He can upgrade the response or downgrade the response. He gets there first before the trucks because the guys are putting their fire gear on, takes a couple of minutes for them to get out the door. He's already on his way, he's halfway there in the car already. Falmouth's doing it, Sandwich is doing it, Hyannis is doing it. It's, an agency as busy as we are and as big geographically as we are, we should, we should be doing it here. Unfortunately, we can't do it with the current staffing we have. So as we grow incrementally, that's going to be something I'm going to bring forward, that we need to put that captain in the car.
I think we've been talking about that for a couple of weeks.
I brought it up before.
Yeah.
And it's a supervisory thing, really. It's, he's distracted because he's either on the piece with the siren going and the engine going to a call, or he's in the second ambulance transporting a patient to the hospital. His role as a shift commander needs to be a shift commander, not an ambulance driver.
So I guess where are we at with the safer hirings?
The advertisement is out currently. We have a deadline of November 9th. Applications are coming in daily. We got a bunch over the weekend. We will be going through that process and doing the hiring shortly after that.
So do you foresee hiring them on the same schedule, not trying this maybe 12-hour schedule as the other firefighters?
I think the study's recommendation was to do.
8:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
Yeah. We were, we were just going to put them on the regular shift at this point because we're only adding one person per group. I think their recommendation is if we hired 12, which would be three people per group, to put them on that 12-hour schedule. So they would be during the busy time, those three individuals would staff an ambulance or possibly a second engine during that eight-to-eight shift. The current four that we're hiring with the safer grant, that's going to give us an extra one person per shift as four groups.
I have a lot of questions about costs related to these, and I don't want to get into it this time. But I think at this point, I would think that we've heard enough information through the study, through both of the chiefs, for pros and cons. And perhaps we could ask administration to kind of compile those for us and the costs associated with the options that are presented to us right now so we can make an educated decision. That's, that's what I think. I think we've heard, we've heard from both of them. And I think I really need to just, we need to really look at the pros and cons from each of them on that particular issue and the costs associated with each option, and then go from there. But I appreciate all your hard work. I know that there's a lot we're in agreeance with and a lot of it's a work in progress. And I know you guys are extremely busy. So I just appreciate everybody's hard work and continued, continued support. There's a lot of these little items on here that I think, you know, strategic planning, these are things that we should be looking at for free cash, you know, because that's a one-time thing at least now. My only other question would be the line, the deployed. We can't backfill temporary for a deployed even, huh?
We're looking into it now. I can let Dan expand on that.
So if we had an article, we talked about this, I think, when the police were here, like that addressed LOD and deployments of long duration, and we could draw off that money, we could then do a temporary. The situation you get into is who's going to take that temporary job, you know? So, but I mean, but right now, we don't have any funds to do it. But if we had funds, then it would become a body issue. Who would be available to do it? Who would want to take a job if it's a year deployment? Maybe there's a person that would want to do that for a year, get the experience under their belt. It's a chance you could take, right?
It would be.
Yeah, absolutely. But right now, it, we, like, we're going to propose putting an article in front of you for LODs and deployment, extraordinary circumstances. So we have some money potentially to consider to do something with. Because it's also a problem, the chief alluded to it, on the overtime situation.
Yeah, and the other issue is, you know, we hire somebody provisionally, say, to cover that deployment. They're not useful to us unless they have already had a paramedic authorization to practice and has been to the fire academy. So there's a delay, just like in the police, there's a delay in getting them in service. We're very fortunate, this last one we just hired, she has paramedic certification already.
You have a she?
We do. We've had females in the past, we have a new female paramedic, already been to the fire academy. One of our call firefighters originally, it's a great story actually, and I'm sorry to take time up, but this is worth taking time for. She's, she was a non-call firefighter with us, went on to paramedic school, did her paramedic ride time in Yarmouth with our members. They taught her a lot. And unfortunately, at that time, when she got her paramedic, she had been offered a job in Mashpee already, and she accepted that offer. She went to the fire academy, got her certification, and had seen me a few times and expressed an interest to come back to Yarmouth because this is where she started. And we're thrilled to have her back. And she's going to work out very well for us. And as far as accommodations, we've had female paramedics in the past. All three stations do have accommodations for females. They have separate bathrooms, separate living quarters for the female.
Awesome.
So.
That's great.
Yeah, it's good. We're excited.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Dan, can we set like a 60-day window or a 90-day window?
Probably at this point, we're doing the budget. Yeah, it would say, you know, some of the information would be borrowed, but I'd prefer like 90 days because there's a lot in front of us right now.
Okay. And, you know, I think Tracy's suggestion is a good one, pull everything together and so that we can get a cut at it. And, you know, if we need to have a preliminary review and a second review, fine. But, you know, if we can focus on that timeframe, I think it would be good for us. So, okay.
I didn't bring it up.
All right, we're going to move forward with the Green Communities application.
Yeah, I've asked Rich Bienvenu to come in. We need, we're looking for two votes from the board. One is related to the fuel efficiency policy for vehicles. We had, Rich had given you a presentation the other few meetings ago about that. And then the other issue was the adoption of the townwide for town buildings energy reduction plan that gets us to the, essentially it'll get us to 15% reduction over five years with the idea that we come up with an extra 5% along the way. The grant money that we would become eligible for is then used towards achieving those goals in the reduction plan. And so you get the benefit of tapping into a source of money we didn't presently have. You get to do the energy conservation measures and totally you get to save dollars to the town's energy footprint and at the same time reducing the Commonwealth greenhouse gas emission goals.
Okay.
Is there, we've been over this before, has there been anything that's?
Nothing changed.
Changed? Okay, I'll make a motion.
So I'm just here tonight asking for the votes. I haven't received no further feedback from what was presented, other than the final draft as substantially presented to you, is finalized and is ready to go.
Make a motion, we adopt the fuel efficiency policies drafted and presented?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Make a motion that we approve or adopt the Green Communities program energy, is it just the town's energy reduction?
Town energy reduction plan and the application.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Good to go. Thank you very much.
Sorry, Margaret. You waited all that time.
Thank you.
Gee.
Thank you for all your work.
Yeah, persistence pays off, right? All right.
Thank you very much. It's been, I got to commend Rich for picking up the ball and Margaret's song, I believe I saw in the background. They've worked really hard on this. This has been a very large lift for a very small group, and they've done a great job. And we are a complicated situation because the town had done a fair amount of energy conservation projects that would normally have been easy to do, but this has been a long-duration effort and it's certainly something that I appreciate greatly, so thank you very much.
All right, great. Thank you all. All right. All right, next on the agenda, Manichee's ballot vote. Who's heading up this discussion?
I thought we did this already, but.
Well, so there's two parts. I mean, I think, Ed, in the background, so one of them is the decision that we would need on the board's level related to whether or not you'd want during that same day of the election that the school district is sponsoring, our own town ballot for the debt exclusion.
I say yes. Make a motion. We have our ballot at the same time. I thought we already did this.
We didn't take a vote to advance the question. We didn't take a vote to advance the question. We had a discussion about it, but we never, at that time, we weren't ready to take a vote on it.
I'm ready.
You're ready?
It's almost 10 o'clock. I'm ready to go.
I'll second.
All right. I'd like to talk about it. I don't agree with it. First of all, I watched the Dennis Select Board discuss this issue twice. I watched it twice about a week ago is when their meeting was. And they have set up the vote for their May meeting. And they believe that doing so will afford the community the appropriate amount of time to discuss the issue, debate it, and vote on it in a regular voting schedule. Putting this on the December warrant will cause two things. First of all, it will disenfranchise quite a few members of our community who will not be in the area to vote. And secondly, it will not allow as much time for those people to come to the, come to an election and make a vote over a normal day. And thirdly, I believe it will really confuse people. They're going to be faced with two votes on that day with regard to the actual project and then funding of the project. And I think we need to have separate votes, and we need to have a clear discussion of those issues separately. And I think unfortunately, we get, we get things mixed together, and we're giving short shrift, or not allowing people enough time to vote on this critical issue. And, you know, I think that we need to see how the vote comes out. And I think that, as in the case of Dennis, we need to see what kind of funding alternatives there are before we ask our voters to make a decision. And I think that it's a complex issue. We need a full understanding of all the costs involved and the direction that we're going. And, you know, I just think that pulling this together with the vote on the project itself is, I think is a disservice to our voters.
Well, I support the motion. I think it would be helpful for us, since this is going to be on the ballot, in terms of preparing budgets, knowing where we stand financially, I think there's a huge upside to this in terms of doing it. I don't disagree with many of the points that you've raised. I understand those. But I think in the interest of providing some certainty, at least to the budgetary process, and going forward, I think it would be helpful to take as early a bite at the apple at this as we possibly can.
We still may need to put it on our May town meeting. This leaves us that possibility. We don't need to go to the meeting, actually.
No, it would be a spring ballot. It'd be a spring election.
Go to a ballot, yeah.
That's right. So just to let everybody know, we had a meeting, Ed and I and Mary Ann Gibbs, town accountant over in Dennis, and Liz Sullivan, the town administrator, with Carol Woodbury and Ken Jenks, last Friday, I believe it was. And one of the things that's problematic for us as administration is the cost escalating schedule, if you will, like construction project detail will not be to us until after the board vote takes place in Boston, which occurs shortly after the ballot question. So if the ballot question passes on December 4th, shortly thereafter, we would then be presented with, at that time, what the rest of the project's schedule looks like. So from, as it was explained to Ed and I, much of 2019 would be set up as design-related costs. And there's going to need to be, much like with Cape Tech, probably two borrowing cycles in that they need some money to continue the design and OPM effort. And then, when that's finished and it goes out to bid, and I think they were talking about putting it out to bid very late in 2019, then you, when you get the bid number in for what the construction cost is, then you have the debt offering for the rest of the project. So, you know, one of our concerns was, is what that schedule looks like. And it's now pushed off pretty far. I think it's a little bit farther off than what we had thought it was going to be. But if they get the ballot question passed December 4th, sometime in the first quarter next year, they'd probably be looking for some money to continue the effort of design, because there'll be, the money for the feasibility phase ends the day the MSBA takes the vote. Unfortunately, I don't have any more detail than that. And maybe Ed can fill in some additional things if I missed it.
Just to kind of offer, you know, a different viewpoint, obviously, there's going to be a lot of initiatives and education as it relates to this vote coming up in December, you know, both pros and cons. And if, say, for example, it passes, and then later on, when we don't have that much education and focus on it, it doesn't pass, the debt exemption doesn't pass, then what we're looking at is that debt surface is going to come out of the general fund. We're going to have to fund that one way or the other. It's either going to pass or fail on its merits based on the discussions that are had between now and then. And we want those votes, you know, ideally to sync up, because if they don't, there's going to be a dramatic impact on the town's budget. If, for example, the vote passes for the school, but the debt exemption doesn't pass, then at least for one year, there's going to be a dramatic impact. We can go after that vote, year after year after year, until it passes. But, you know, we'll be out that money, because we're being forced to pay that if this passes.
I think that people should know, and this is the thing that we've been having this conversation for a while, you know, that's one of the things about the Cape Tech building. It's easy to go in there and vote for a building when there's no particular effect to you. This shows the people what it's going to cost them. And I think that that's important.
Obviously, your decision, just giving you another viewpoint.
Yeah, I don't like the 12-hour thing. I mean, I don't think it gives them ample time. Eight hours, I'm sorry. But, you know, I read a memo about the absentee ballot.
Yeah.
So there's that ability. And I think that we should, in addition to the school, I think that we should have our own public hearing on what the tax impacts specifically to...
We have two dates in November, in which we'll reserve time on the normal board meeting calendar for that to occur.
And if we do that, and then don't take the vote until later, I think we've lost the, you know, the project obviously will hype up. There'll be some, I'm sure, money going into their position and raising awareness of their vote. So I think it's important to do it both at the same time. And I understand, Norm, I don't think that there's a perfect scenario either way. But, I mean, I think that we should at least do it, and we may have to do it again, but...
Just to let Member Stone know, there's been a motion to advance the ballot vote at the town, for the district election scheduled for December 4th. The town debt exclusion vote, it was a motion by selectwoman Posten, seconded by selectwoman Forrest. And now we're in discussion.
Norm would like to hold off.
The town of Dennis has deferred until May a vote on the debt exclusion. I watched their meeting a couple of times, and the discussion of that, they're not going to vote on it. That was at the same meeting where they decided that to write us back a letter saying that they would fund the capital at foundation enrollment levels, which at this point would be, based on what our current knowledge is, probably at 32%. And, you know, they, and they voted at that meeting to only offer to fund capital, not operating costs. And they voted not to further any discussions whatsoever with regard to the other parts of the agreement that we had previously agreed on. So, you know, they backtracked and so forth during that last meeting.
So if I may, to give you some additional information, I believe, Ed, correct me if I'm wrong here, the number that's on the school ballot explanation that I just passed out, the split value is based on the October 1 enrollment from 2017, based on the present distribution of Yarmouth and Dennis children in the 4th through 7th split. So that number could very well slip below 30% in the upcoming October 1 certification number. So they're offering the foundation enrollment number in a new agreement, which right now would be like, to your point, would be like 32 or 33%.
Who approves that? Who would approve that? Does that, is that an amendment to the regional agreement that we have to go to town meeting?
Well, it has to get approval by the DESE Commissioner first, and then it can come back, get work approved by the school committee, and it goes to town meeting.
So it doesn't affect if we had the ballot now, or...
No, it doesn't affect it. So one of the questions that came up in our meeting with the superintendent was, well, what would happen in light of the numbers that they have proposed in there, is based on the October 1, 2017 enrollment. Would there have to be another ballot question? I've gotten an opinion from our council, and we had asked the school to get an opinion from their council, that the language in the ballot is broad enough such that we wouldn't have to get another vote. It would be acceptable as is. So the problem is, how long would it take to get DESE approval on an agreement, and then the school committee, then town meeting? I mean, that could be like two years.
And the clock starts ticking on the date that it's, so there's...
I would say the ballot date, if it were to pass on December 4th, that's the, the point in which...
Foundation at the time of the bonding. When does the school bond that?
Well, so Dennis has...
That's what this says.
No, no, you're right. So Dennis has made it very craftily to say that it would kick in on when the final bond would be sold or authorized. The agreement, as it's presently going to go to ballot, the day it passes, if it were to pass, we'd be under that October 1, 2017 split for that moment in time. So it's almost like getting best of both worlds from their perspective.
Yeah.
Well, so this binds, I guess I don't understand your last point. Our regional agreement says that capital will be, capital costs will be split based upon bonding date. That's the way it has historically been done. That's the way it is in the current capital costs that are billed to Dennis and Yarmouth. It's based upon the original bonding date.
Right, so if...
Why would this change?
Well, because the way they wrote this, if it were to go, and we didn't agree to change it, we would, probably by the time the final bond gets sold, we could be at like 29% for Dennis. So the number that's on their ballot question explanation is the October 2017 enrollment. But by the time the bond finally gets sold, we already know, it's been estimated, they're going to slip below 30% for this October 1 enrollment. So it'll just continue to decline. And then that means our share of the actual bill when it gets sold is larger.
But what it says here is, is anticipated. Doesn't say it shall be. It says, it is anticipated that the net principal amount allocable to each member town of the district exclusive interest would be approximately as follows. So this is clearly allowing for a change.
It is. Yeah, that's what I said. Yeah. So there's no, there's no, the question was brought up, would we have to go to a ballot question again if we actually struck an agreement that was different than what the ballot question went to the voters with?
No.
And the answer to that is no. The language is sufficiently broad enough that it will accommodate a change in the agreement.
So I'm reading their memo, Norm, not the ballot question.
Oh, okay.
I was reading what they wrote, that the school ballot question in December is successful. Dennis will have a proposition two and a half debt exclusion for the funding of the project in May, which you just said, to fund the new school in its entirety based on the foundation enrollment, just the new school.
Right.
The foundation enrollment at the time of the bonding, be calculated and utilized for the split of the funding of the new middle school. That's what I was talking about.
Yeah, well, you know, they, if you watch the meeting, they thought that you could just change the wording of enrollment by agreement between the two towns to be the foundation enrollment without changing the agreement. Bob Misodri kept flipping through his copy of the agreement, trying to find a reference to the definition of enrollment. It's clear in the agreement, and he just couldn't find it at their meeting. And, you know, they, so they, I don't know if that belief is still there or not, but clearly they did not have a, an understanding of the agreement.
The pathway was explained to us again by the school to a change. It would be a change in the agreement, which would have to be approved by DESE first, and then come back to the towns.
Do we know what the school committee is meeting on this Thursday?
I don't. I haven't.
My understanding is that there's a meeting of the school committee to clarify some elements of what's been submitted to the towns.
Yeah, that would be news. I have not had any communication.
Some misunderstanding. I don't know if that has to do with the dollar amount applicable to each town.
I don't know. I'll find out. I'll call tomorrow.
Well...
So my only question is, is there, will there be a change in this, will our vote, whether it's in December for a debt exclusion or May, affects the time of bonding or the dollar amount?
No. So the project can't go any higher than what's in the ballot question explanation. It could actually only go lower. There still can be some time to reduce.
But we're not printing a dollar amount.
No, we're not. But the school department is. So it could not get any worse for us as...
Long way to put it, huh?
I don't, you know, let me knock on wood on that. I've been around long enough to know it could get worse. But as it's presently proposed, the only thing that could get worse for us is if we don't take Dennis up on that offer on the foundation enrollment. We already know that by the time that bond sells, the student enrollment split's going to be below 30%. So our number actually will grow.
Well, that leads me to my next point. Yeah, I spent, I don't know, a day and a half going through numbers on this freaking agreement. Excuse me. But, you know, right now, and let me talk about what occurred at the Dennis meeting, because it's important. Bob Misodri went through three scenarios, a 60-40 split of the capital costs, a split at 65-35, and a split based on foundation enrollment. They agreed in the room, including the members of the finance committee, that it was fair and equitable to use foundation enrollment for capital costs, whatever that number comes out to. And they know that it's somewhat higher than the, as they called it, net enrollment, which is really the enrollment as of October 1. And they calculated in, or Bob Misodri calculated in that, that the 60-40 split would cost them 29 million, that the foundation enrollment would cost them 24 million. So there's a $5 million advantage to going with the foundation enrollment. And then there was ensuing discussion at that point by... And then there was ensuing discussion at that point by Jim Plath, as well as Mr. Terrio, with regard to deferring as long as possible so that the numbers would go down to Dennis' advantage, be that it may, whatever it comes out to, they were at least acknowledging the fact that foundation enrollment is a more valid measure of the total student count in the communities. And so, let's talk about that for a minute, because I think that, you know, the difference between 60-40 and foundation enrollment's about $5 million. So how much is that in terms of cost? You've got to double it with interest, and, you know, it depends on how many years you choose, depends on what the interest rate is, and it probably could be even more than that. But what is the cost to Yarmouth of that, and I'm going to say it's $10 million? Well, it's not an awful lot of money. You divide it by 25 years, that's $400,000 a year. What does that amount to on an individual tax bill? Well, it's about 25 bucks on an individual tax bill. So I'm done with battling about this. And, you know, as far as I'm concerned, we ought to say to them, we'll take foundation enrollment for all, everything, capital costs and operating costs. As long as you also agree that the modifications to the agreement, other than for student population or student, or for the school committee representation, as long as the modifications to the agreement are accepted, including the requirement to mediate, or not to mediate, but to meet for review of the agreement every three years. I think we ought to respond to them in that respect. Close the book on it and be done. I'm not willing to go to the mat and declare war on Dennis for 25 bucks in capital costs. And I'm, you know, frankly, sick and tired of negotiating on an agreement that is awful and which allows us no recourse in the future. Now, if they're not willing to put in a three-year renegotiation, that's an entirely different matter. I mean, it's kind of like saying that to hell with you, as far as I'm concerned. And, you know, I, that's my feeling on the agreement. As to whether this project is beneficial for this town, we have to have some serious discussion about that, because for 48 million bucks, we can do a new school, not new school, a total renovation of Mattakee's, in addition to Mattakee's, adding on classrooms, because all the other spaces in Mattakee's, talk about gym, administration, all those other spaces, are almost identical to the proposed Station Avenue school. So no other spaces would have to be increased in size. So the only space that would have to be added on to at Mattakee's would be classroom space. And I think we could do that within that budget, get state support, and put all of our students in one building. And let Dennis, as Misodri was talking about, take all their 4 to 7 students and put them in Wixon. Because he did that comparison. He said that they could do that for 26 million bucks. So he thought that as a result, that was justification. They found no value, no value whatsoever in the relationship with Yarmouth. So, and Jim Plath stated that again, that Yarmouth is offering nothing. Well, nothing, this community offers nothing by having a tax-free piece of land in the middle of Yarmouth devoted to schools? I mean, my gosh.
Plus police, fire, and DPW services.
All those things. And the opportunity for their students to have expanded curricula and teacher base. There's so many things this community offers that they minimize at their choosing in order to excuse to their voters their cheapness.
Norm, I think the points that you're bringing up are valid, and we've been going around with this for a while. And I think that we really need to reach out to the public and explain our position and where we are, and let the public tell us where they want to go. I think that, I think that having a partner, like we've seen, you know, I'm going to go back to months ago, where I said, you know, buying a house together when you don't want to be married isn't the smartest thing to do. I've been supportive of the regionalization because I agree that there is educational benefits to it. But that doesn't mean that we can't look at the alternatives of doing it on our own, and I think we should. I think we should look at Mattakee's, knowing about the ME Small Project, and considering the price, you know, I think it's risky because we're potentially leaving state funds on the table.
I think Eric is absolutely right, that it is unconscionable not to look at combining our elementary schools with, and having a K to 8 solution.
I agree with that, but I think it's up to the public, and I think at this point in time, we, first of all, we don't have any say in this. This is going to happen.
No, we don't. You're right. You're right. And, you know, understand that.
This wants to be out of the barn, but sometime between now and the vote, I think we need to really take a look at what this dollar amount is and what we could potentially do, and find out what the public wants to do.
I understand. I think, you know, and I'm...
But having a vote with no money, Norm, I think is a potential danger.
I went through calculations today of, you know, what we could do with 50 million bucks in terms of renovating and adding on to Mattakee's, and we would have a lot of money left over to work on the elementary schools. And that financial challenge to our community right now, we've got to face up, we've got to put it in front of our voters in the next 60 days so that they know what we're giving up. Because what we could be giving up by doing the 4 to 7 solution at Station Avenue is the entire renovation of those two elementary schools, and having to pay for that all, and also pay 48 million for Station Avenue. And I think we're shooting ourselves in the foot. But that comes back to the basic point about when should we take the vote on the debt exclusion vote? And as I said, Dennis has decided they're not going to take the debt exclusion vote until May. They're going to vote on December 4th, as we are with regard to the regional school project. They don't want to confuse their voters with the two votes.
Norm, do you think part of it might be they figure they might get their elderly population back in May? That might not be there in December?
I don't know. I don't know what, they were not expressive with regard to that in that meeting. I think they had previously decided on that issue, not, it wasn't decided at the meeting last week. So, but as I said, there are other issues. You know, by voting in May, we, more people would be available in our town to vote. It would give them a chance to vote. Secondly, it would not be confusing by having two votes on December 4th, one having to do with the project itself, and one having to do with the funding. The wording is just going to be terrible to put in front of voters. And, you know, the, the other issue is that the December 4th vote is a shortened timeframe for a vote. It's not a full day like a typical election, whereas in May, we would have a full-day election going from 7:00 a.m. or whatever it is to 7:00 p.m. So voters would have a longer period of time to get to the polls, and they would have the additional motivation of possibly voting on other things having to do with town election. It would be a town election day and so forth. I don't know what other motivations that Dennis has. I'm not talking about Dennis at this point. I'm talking about the fact that we give our voters a better chance.
I was just wondering if the same rationalization might apply for us as for them, if indeed that's why they put it over until May, the funding issue.
I don't know.
Selectmen Stone, we, when you're out of the room, one of the dangers is, it passes in December, and then, like you're saying, more voters, more time to think about it. It fails in May. We then have to fund it out of our general fund. We then have to cut town services, cut the town budget to actually fund the debt. We're obligated, if the vote passes in December, to fund the school. We have no choice. And just to cite, excuse me, another community, Harwich, when they did the Cape Tech vote, actually had both votes at the same time, both for the funding as well as the vote on the, on whether or not to fund, or pass the school project itself.
Isn't Dennis running that same risk?
They are, absolutely. They have a lot more excess levy capacity than we do. They don't tax up to the maximum, so they have some room to actually increase their taxes, so, you know, which we don't have. We have to tax to the max just to keep the government going. I'm not saying that they could fund it, the entire amount of the debt, with their excess levy capacity, but they have a significant down payment on it.
Yeah, the only reason they have excess levy capacity is that we paid for their students going to chartering and in other schools, as well as took on the additional enrollment. That's why they have that excess capacity.
Again, there's no perfect scenario, but we will have time to do it again if we can't, you know, if it passes and we can't get it funded, at least if we do it this way. I mean, I've said, I've said all I want to say.
Can I ask a question to Ed? If we were not to do this, how does this complicate the budget preparation process? To me, it would seem like it would add another level of uncertainty.
Absolutely. It, you know, again, depending on as Town Administrator Knappick said, once we have the construction schedule, if we actually have to fund something in FY 2020, then if this passes, we've got to come up with that money. We don't have a choice.
Right.
We have no idea what that's going to be till after.
Till after December 12th, I think it is.
Yeah, that's what concerns me.
So one of the things we would do, like, we'd have to take any free cash certification that gets up, we want to put it away in the bank, just to buffer what could happen, because it might not pass even in May, right? So we would have to start preparing.
We've never had a $48 million project, as far as I know. I just think it's very risky, sending the voters in and not knowing that they actually have to pay for it. You know, it's easy to say, I want a new school. We all want a new school, right? I mean...
No, I would agree. I think, I think the consequences of not putting this on the ballot are worth noting. I'm concerned about them. That's why I support the motion that Tracy put forward.
You know, I'm just concerned when, you know, this, the date of this December 4th, and, you know, like I said...
Selectmen Holcomb, you had some great suggestions so that we can get the absentee ballots out there as well, well, you know, for those folks that might go to Florida or Arizona, just to get them the ability to actually vote as well.
Yeah, we need to make sure we tell a lot of people about that.
Yeah, I think there's, in effect, disenfranchises a lot of people, one way or the other.
But that's not by our choice.
Why don't the voters get confused and vote for the school but don't vote for the funding?
We would, we'd do it again in May.
We wouldn't be any worse off.
Yeah. And, you know, the schools are paying for, you know, the bulk of this, well, we're paying for the bulk of this election, one way or the other, so, you know, having that additional ballot as we do this, you know, just a small incremental additional cost to do that. But we have as, you know, depending on the funding schedule, we have up to 30 years or 25 years to actually run these debt exemptions, votes to try to fund the school. But we'll have to come up, if it passes, we have to come up with the money.
I guess, going back to Norm's position for a minute, if it passes in December, this is the question on the schools, how likely is it, once the voters know that they have a choice between an override and cutting town services to the bone, that they're not going to pass the override? Is that a real, is that a substantial risk? I'm kind of thinking it's not.
No, I can't imagine either. I think just the opposite.
We've done it in the past, where overrides for the school, I think up to a $900,000 override failed multiple times, and what we ended up doing is cutting town services, cutting staff, reducing expenses on the town side. That's where I lost 20% of my staff, you know, as a result of some of those types of things. I mean, it was also the economy and several other things. It's a tough decision. I mean, I don't envy you in terms of the decision you make.
Can towns file bankruptcy?
They have. I don't think we want to.
Well, this is going to cost, you know, I said the 400,000 would cost, are 400,000 related to the difference between the 40% capital share for Dennis and the foundation enrollment would cost Yarmouth, would cost Dennis 400,000, would cost, or would cost, I'm sorry, would cost Yarmouth 400,000 and favor Dennis by 400,000. This will cost 10 times that. It'll cost about $4 million a year. And, you know, that's 250 bucks on every taxpayer's bill. Plus whatever future costs lies in the elementary school.
Was that figure 10 million you said?
For which one? For the capital?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd say it's about 10 million.
About $10 million. That's how you come up with the 50 per expert.
Am I allowed to call the question?
Of course.
It's just getting late. I don't...
Has been seconded.
Mark seconded it 20 minutes ago.
Which?
Tracy's original motion.
Oh, I didn't hear it. Must be selective hearing.
Tracy's motion is, put them both on together.
Yep. All right. We have a, any further discussion on the question of calling the question? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No?
You don't want to call the question, or you don't?
I, I'll, you know, I don't know if there's further discussion on it at this point. Do you want to say anything on it, Mike?
I'm just, I'm just concerned about voters getting very confused about it. And I'm also wondering why, what Dennis's strategy is in terms of putting off the funding until May. And I got to believe that it has something to do with the electorate. And I think a lot of our people are probably not going to be here on December 4th. I'd like to see as many people weigh in on this as possible on both, both issues. But, you know, if we could get around, you know, if I could get around my concern about the confusion, I understand the point about you'd have to take it out of the municipal budget, but I'm willing to bet that if the taxpayers knew they were locked in and the school issue passed, that they would opt to go with the override and not fund it out of, I'm not that concerned that that would happen.
You're going to have a better chance of it passing when there's no purse strings attached to it. And who's going to go, oh, you want to, yep, okay. And then we're really in a situation, because then if we can't get it passed, then we are screwed. And that's the only way I can put it. It's really easy to go into the ballot box and vote for something you don't have to fund.
I understand the purse strings, but I'm wondering if the voter will. That's my concern.
I don't think it's confusing at all. It's the same topic. One votes to approve it, one votes to fund it. We have to do our job to educate people. We'll have to do that anyway, if it's in May or if it's now.
Right. I can't see the supporters of the school going in there voting for the school project and then voting against an exclusion. They're going to go in there voting for this. And I would agree with Tracy that this is the, we need the exclusion. We still have opportunities to address some of the other issues with respect to negotiating other aspects of the agreement. I don't see that as being excluded any way from this. But I think we're creating a huge level of uncertainty in terms of running this town if we don't take advantage of this opportunity now. So I strongly support the motion. I think it makes a great deal of sense. And I, putting this off and then having to deal potentially with the likelihood of some costs coming in towards, at the last minute, that could affect our budget...
We've got the DPW override, because a debt exemption coming in May, right? What's going to happen? You know what happens? Nope, nope, nope. They go right down. We've been there before.
Yeah. Well, that's true. There's that ripple effect. There's no question about it. So I really believe we've got to take a stab at this now. It doesn't foreclose us from addressing other questions regarding the formula, regarding negotiations on splitting admin costs or any other aspects of those negotiations. It just makes sure that we have some certainty early on what we're dealing with in terms of the budget. Like I said, I think I wouldn't want to be in Ed's shoes trying to figure out how to manage the budgetary process going forward with this hanging over our head. I can't account for Dennis, but I know from our point of view, I have a great, I have great confidence in our budgetary process and the people that run it. So I think if, if, this will be a huge help to them in terms of going forward. Having to put everything off and address it at the last minute is just, it's something I can't support, so.
So what will be the educational process? Here we are on October 15th. We've got less than 60 days to go. I heard it's our job to educate the voters, so let's hear it.
I think we need to have a public hearing, separate from our own meeting. I think we need to have a whole meeting at Mattakee's or wherever it is and really lay out our, what's going down and let the people comment.
We've reserved, as I mentioned, November 13th to November 20th as informational hearings. That's already part of the normal schedule. If you want to do something, that's something different than that, I'm all for it. I just need to know what you want to do.
Are those Tuesdays?
Those are Tues, those are regular meeting nights, yes, sir. Yep, 13th and the 20th.
Just to add, Dan, if I could, and Mr. Chairman, on the point of confusion that Selectman Stone brought up, one of the things that we did, I think it was the board's suggestion with the Cape Tech vote, was provided in advance clear language on the school question, particularly on the funding, on what the impacts are and what a yes and a what a no vote means. And we got great feedback on that, that that was really helped people to really understand what their vote was. And that is something I'd imagine that we would want to do again, to be able to provide people with that clarity on what their vote really is and what the potential impact of that vote is.
You mean the exact cost?
No, not an exact cost, but an exact, if I vote yes for the school, then here's the result, right, related to funding and what happens with the school. And then secondarily, if I vote on funding, if I vote yes on a debt exclusion, here's what it means. If I vote no on the debt exclusion, here's what it means. And there's language in there around, you know, where money needs to come from if a debt exclusion doesn't pass.
So to follow up on that, what we can do on the October 30th meeting, we can share with the board, we'll reserve some time on the agenda, to share with the board what we believe to be the analysis of this project coupled with the Cape Tech borrowing, coupled with like a potential DPW building, and also provide you a 10-year update or outlook as to what the debt service would look like, what a proposed plan would be. So that way, well in advance of the two dates in November, you'll have that latest information as we project it to be able to start the conversation of discussing this and we could prepare like a one-page, here's what happens, here's the estimated impact. We're going to have to make some grand assumptions, there's no question about it. But the, at least we can start that dialogue. You'll have that information in your hands and then fine tune it for the 13th and the 20th.
How do you feel about the ballot date, Dan?
I personally would like to see it, if the will of the voters is such that they pass the school. And a lot of that's going to be out of our hands, because it's a joint aggregated vote tally. So, but the key for, for us personally is, as administration, is if you're going to send people to support a school on December 4th, I'd like to see them take an opportunity to take a vote at the same time to pay the bill for that school. I think there's a lot of effort and energy going on by that parent bracket that, you know, I, you know, Norm, you kind of got a number that I can't disagree with you. The impacts a few years out, it's $4 million. There's not too much of a doubt about it. And we're looking at some projections internally as to what that would cost on the average homeowner. If we ever had to just shave $4 million off the budget, everything we talked about tonight, just throw it out the window. It's, we're not going to advance anywhere. The other issue would be, that DPW garage is, it's a disaster as it is now. I mean, you saw that. You've endorsed the plan to get to where we are today. The idea that that could compete on the May election at the same time with this project, that would just guarantee its defeat, I would think. And for the safety of all the folks that operate DPW, you know, it's unfortunate we're in this position. This is a huge borrowing. I completely understand it, big dollar values, but so many things have just stacked up against us that there's no better time to put it in front of people than to try to get it going so that we can move the town forward. And it'll be up to them ultimately to decide if they want to pay the bill.
Well, I think by the time we've got all those numbers added up, we're going to be looking at, you know, a 20% increase in taxes, 750 bucks for the average homeowner.
That's before we talk about wastewater.
That's before wastewater, that's right.
Our estimates are, our estimates with the Cape Tech plus the DUI school, as well as the DPW building, are considerably less than that. And that's, and this is, we had that dialogue about what your preference was for the, for the time period you would have for the debt. What we did was we said, okay, we already know what the multiple towns voted for the Cape Tech. Now we can actually try to weave in the, the middle school and we can weave in the DPW garage. And my recommendation would be to do that at a longer period of time to mitigate the impact of, over the, or for the taxpayers, to try to reduce the tax rate or to reduce the percentage tax increase. And then we also have the capital stabilization. Some of the models actually have that being weaved in over a period of time to try to mitigate it. We're looking at the debt drop-off, both from an exempt point of view and a not exempt point of view, again, to try to, try to smooth out this as much as possible, try to reduce the impact. So now that we have all three, we have some scenarios that, you know, it's, it's still a big number, but it's, you know, trying to, trying to make it a little bit softer than, than...
What do you think would be a realistic projection?
So I'm looking at, with everything involved, around 8% increase with all three projects in 2020.
I'm not sure.
8%, looking at a $340,000 home, looking at that as, as being the typical home. We're looking at, after we do a lot of the mitigation, and that's not including whether we want to put some free cash towards this to try to, try to reduce the borrowing cost. We're going to get, if this passes, we're going to get some, a small reimbursement from Dennis related to the school building study, if we try to put that against this. Not including that, we're looking at the impact of all three borrowings on a home of $340,000 of around $300 per year over the course of time. And then when the Cape Tech borrowing drops off in 20 years, then the, then the rate continues to decrease.
So that would be it for at least 20 years, 20 to 25 years?
That's correct.
Somewhere in there.
Right.
And that's, but that's not considering any, any elementary school.
That's correct.
And it's not considering the fact that our, we're going to have to go for overrides next year on the school budget because our enrollment will drop to, or the enrollment will drop to 30, so we're going to be picking up another 2% of the school budget. And, you know, that's...
Which is why I think they want the vote to be in May. It must be for something.
I think, I think to everybody's point, as it relates to educating the public, what you want to do is you want to educate the people that are voting on the 4th. You don't necessarily want to educate the people that are voting in May. I think you would do both, obviously. But the ones on the 4th, you need to influence if you want to do something different. You want to influence them. You want to take these numbers and say, are you willing to actually spend this kind of money? If you are, you want to vote, you want to vote yes on both. If you're not, you want to vote no on both. So I, you know, you know, just maybe a little bit contrary to this.
If you do, if you don't want to.
And we'll have the data that you can use as you're having this discussion with the public. And we can work out whatever scenarios you guys think are appropriate in terms of how we're going to lay out our, our debt going forward and how we can preserve doing other things with the government.
All right, well, you know, I understand that thinking. I guess, you know, if we have a public meeting independent of our select board meetings, I think that that's, that's a better strategy than, than having something in connection with our select board meetings.
I think we should have a forum.
Yeah, I agree. And, you know, I think that, I think the people ought to hear multiple times about the projections. I think if we plan a forum sometime in mid-November, they should be hearing those numbers on the 13th and the 20th as well, exactly what the numbers are, so that we get as much exposure on, on what it's costing the community. You know, I spent probably four or five hours today trying to go through the space projections for Station Avenue based on the Perkins requirements. And it's, it's amazing how Dennis thinks that their 32% or whatever the number is is representative of their, their space share. Just amazing. You know, if you run the numbers on, on the space, the common areas in that building, it's clear that their share is closer to 40% than it is to 30%. But I'm done arguing that issue. I'm just fed up with it, frankly, so.
I don't, I don't even think the voters of Dennis would disagree with you.
Well, you know...
From the people I've talked to, they want, they want to build the new school and they will, they see our point in it.
Well, except that they're, they're, they're clearly, their select board has, does not have command of the reality. They are just thinking about some convenient numbers that, that help them to reduce their costs to the bare minimum. And, you know, those are the kinds of people that we're dealing with.
They're, they're basically going back to the, the archaic position of the original agreement, and that's where they're coming from.
Cheryl McMahon had the nerve to sit there and say, there's tremendous value in our sending students to Yarmouth, but would not agree to put any, any dollars to that value. I'm just so disgusted with their attitudes. In any case, we have a motion. Any further discussion?
Yeah, well, it's a 2-2 vote, so I don't know if you want to move on or reconsider the vote.
You and I have voted against it.
We voted about, you know, we, we had a vote on calling the question. And, you know, since, we had further discussions since that one failed.
It's like the Congress.
That's right. So now we're going to...
So now you want to vote on the motion, too?
Vote on the motion, that's right. We've had the discussion since we did not close it at that point. So hearing no further discussion, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Okay, we'll move forward with that and we'll try to schedule our appropriate public meeting.
Will we be able to conjure up some numbers on an alternative plan?
I think that would be helpful.
Well, we have the base repair number for Mattakee's. The problem with it is you're not going to get any state, any state money on it because they had already indicated that it wouldn't be eligible because it doesn't fit with the educational plan the state endorses.
Wait a second, wait a second. If we say, we're going to build a school that, that houses K through 8, or even build a school that's 4 to 7, that satisfies the educational plan?
The space in that building does not fit...
No, we would have to, we would have to add on to it.
No, I think, Norm, the base of that building structure, particularly the 4 to 7, you can't reconfigure the classrooms to meet today's standards for a new school that they were going to reimburse. The other challenge that you would have is the state inject... The other challenge that you would have is the state injected itself into this process a couple of years ago, and the team went up there to advance this thing beyond Matikes to make it a Dennis-wide, you know, Wixson solution. They've already gone out on a limb. So, the problem that you confront is even though we believe we have a good case, at the acceptance rate of 15%, 15% of the projects submitted to them, it's usually somewhere between 3 and 6 SOI cycles before you even get into the table. You're talking many, many years before we would even be in a good position to make that case. So Station Avenue, or, excuse me, ME Smalls SOI went in this year. It's not untypical that it could take five or six times at the apple. As bad as we think it is, there's schools across the Commonwealth much worse. So that's, that's part of the challenge of doing something different at this point with that building. Now, I'm not saying that for 50 million bucks, you couldn't get a good project. I just don't think you're going to get state help, my own personal opinion on it.
Well, I mean, the MSBA said, said about, maybe it was 30 to 60 days ago, gee, we hope you didn't misunderstand us. We're, we're interested in, in funding a renovation project. And we hope that that didn't, that you were not under the impression that we would not fund that project because we would.
Yeah, the 6 to 7, 6 and 7th grade, not, not a 4 to 7.
Well, why would it make any difference?
Because the educational requirements for the 4th and 5th grade is different than what we've got going on there at, at Matikes now.
They can fund a 6, 7, and then we close ME Small.
Well, either way, the solution is, there'd be no quick answer to any of this within any timeframe within the next three to five years. I just, I just don't see it with the volume of school projects. And, you know, I, I mentioned to somebody yesterday, just seven years ago, the square foot cost all in on one of these buildings was about $350 a square foot. This building's coming in at like $630 a square foot. So in a very short amount of time, the escalation on these projects is enormous. The interest rates are now going up. I used to borrow on these projects just a few years ago for under 2%. And then the problem is this whole program that the state operates is funded by one penny on the sales tax. So that, so the funding source isn't growing as, it's like Chapter 90, that the cost of road repair is outstripping our ability to pay for roads because that formula hasn't changed, you know? So there's a lot of things working against us. One for sure is the interest rate per challenge environment that we're in now. But that escalating per square foot cost in this building is mind boggling, what's happened.
Well, I think perhaps, I don't know, I don't know if you, we want to add it into the conversation, but perhaps the deregionalization conversation with the public, which from K to 8, is something we need to hear from. Because it's a different scenario when it's not a district school and we can create our own educational plan.
Mm-hmm. Yep. Anyways, we're headed forward on that, so we need to.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Dan, did you want to, did you want to position in response on, on the Dennis letter?
Yeah, so I think at this point, because obviously we're not going to solve this solution. They wanted to know before they would come together again and meet with us, what our response was to this letter. And what I wanted you to be able to do as a group is be able to think about the letter. We had some dialog, robust dialogue tonight about it. What I could do is draft up a response for the next meeting, and then we can discuss how you want to respond to that, finalize that letter at the next meeting, and then, then I can present it to Dennis. I think there's a lot, but they don't even want to come into the room until they hear what our response is, apparently, from tonight, so.
What is the, I guess I'm, I'm concerned that the way that the letter is worded is very specific to the new school and not the overall operation of the district. What is that? I mean, that means we continue to pay for their choice and charter students because they're not changing the operation of, of the agreement. They only want that calculated for the capital. Am I understanding that correctly?
Well, there's this, that's what this letter seems to indicate, but I, I think there is a other document out there that we have, that indicates, or public statements from the newspaper, I believe that it was, where they were willing to move on us, and it would be more a matter of taking those public comments in the newspaper, putting it in our response and saying, based on what we saw in the newspaper coupled with this, here's your answer. And we can put that together for you.
So you want to draft something up?
I wouldn't deal with anything, they, they, nothing with the newspaper because they, in their meeting disputed the accuracy of the newspaper account.
Oh, so the split on operational costs?
Right.
They, they backpedaled on that?
They maintain, even though there's video showing that they offered to split the operating costs. At the same time, they offered 35% on capital costs. We said at that meeting that, that the, the operating cost was fine and we would come back to them with our thoughts about the capital costs. Now, now, Bob Mazadri stated again, the second time I've heard him do that, that in fact, they did not offer that. That they have never offered to split the, the operating costs, which is absolutely untrue. I think back when Cleon Turner was involved, they had agreed to that, didn't they? Yes. And, and he came to the table with a two-pronged offer.
Right.
And, so.
So we'll draft something up to respond just to this letter then?
You know, I, I think there's.
When's our next?
I think we have to say to them that we expect that there will be a requirement for a good faith negotiation every three years.
Good faith.
Subject to mediation or arbitration. And that, you know, if we, if we get that, then we will accept a capital split of, based on foundation enrollment and an operating cost split based on foundation enrollment. They, they wholeheartedly agreed that the foundation enrollment was appropriate to use.
Yeah.
They, they said they wanted to be responsible for all their kids, for the cost of sending all their kids to school. Yet they would not say in that meeting that they would, they would fund at foundation enrollment for operating costs. Now, how ridiculous is that? No, the other, the other point I want to make, Norm, even though I know you are sick to death of this, and, and so am I. You talk about good faith and negotiating in good faith and having that in the agreement. What kind of good faith is going on here? You have a subcommittee, and the whole purpose of the subcommittee is supposed to be to negotiate these items. So they're having public meetings with their full board and their finance committee.
Right.
Where they're discussing these things and saying, oh, we're not going to really send our subcommittee back until you respond to these things. I mean, you talk about gamesmanship. You'd have to be an absolute moron not to see through what they're doing. And it's, and it's not good faith negotiation, in my opinion. And I, you know, I'll argue that point with anybody. Donald Trump was interviewed on 60 Minutes and he talked about negotiating in Washington with, with politicians was like negotiating with a table. I think this is worse.
I would like.
I'll take, I'll take the table.
It's getting late.
It's getting late, yeah, we got to move on.
We have one more vote we need to take tonight.
Yes.
I think it's a relatively easy one. Mr. Colby?
Oh, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the recycling sticker fee for resident only.
I second.
Didn't we go through this before?
We didn't take a vote though.
Attitude.
We have to take a vote now.
So we got to do it.
Can I speak to the motion, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yeah, I just want to thank the members of the recycling committee, Ed, Jeff, Roby, they spent a fairly significant amount of time with me, providing some additional information that makes it much easier for me to change my earlier position to endorse this proposal. I note that the, the recycling committee has endorsed it, there's a lot of endorsement in your packet, and so I'm pleased to see that. Plus, there's some additional information on this memo from, from the recycling and solid waste advisory committee that goes in a little bit more detail in terms of what the other towns are doing. So I think we're in a good spot, I think. And so I'm fully supportive.
And for the record, there was, the public hearing was still open, so there wasn't any.
There was no new information.
Is there anybody who wants to speak on it?
You know, I went to the dump today. And you're going to love this.
I kind of wish you hadn't.
Did you go to the one in France or was it?
I'm going to take this vote before I leave.
Yeah, I will.
Listen, some of those work early.
It's getting late, I know.
I want to hear, I want to hear.
And I stared into this dumpster, looking at all the damn cardboard boxes sitting in that dumpster.
And you saw dollar signs, so you jumped in and you threw them all out.
And it is getting late. So, I'll vote for this darn thing, but, but we've got to do something about getting people to comply.
Agreed.
We can't, you know, and we're going to need people there to follow up to make sure that the people with the $35 dumpster are not throwing their trash.
I think that's one of those things that will police itself.
We've got to have people out there.
God forbid we send the Chinese dirty trash.
If I spend $175 and someone's only spending $30, I'm turning them in.
Well, well, I'll tell you what.
I change.
A year from now, we're going to need to raise that fee to double because it's going to cost us more to have an enforcement person out there patrolling because people are just going to breeze through. I'm going to buy a recycle-only cycle sticker next year.
And if I see you, we're going to fight.
We'll see.
Because if I spend all that money and you don't, I'm going to be mad.
Open the next override.
Hearing no further discussion, those in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you.
Opposed? No.
All right.
All right. Mark, we have board actions.
Yeah, we have just one committee to take care of this evening. This is the DPW building committee appointments. And you have before you in your appointments packet background information on a number of individuals who've agreed to, have expressed interest in this committee and would like to serve, so.
I just would like to know why the town that they live in is blacked out from our knowledge.
I think it's a privacy issue that we've been doing this for a while.
Are they all residents of the town?
Yeah.
It should, that's not private, that they live in Yarmouth or not.
I'm just saying that's, that's a process that's been, that preceded me.
It didn't, it didn't precede me, we used to have it all.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying it preceded me, so.
Hearing no further discussion, is there a second on the motion?
To appoint all the individuals that are listed here in the packet?
Did I hear a second on that motion?
I'll second it.
All right. Any further discussion?
I won't say a thing.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right.
Thank you.
Let me ask a question, Mark, because I was asked by a golfer friend.
Yes.
Who's on the enterprise committee.
Yes.
He was concerned that a individual who has had his name in for quite some time has not been put forward for the enterprise committee.
That's interesting.
And that they need a person.
They do. The way, let me just explain generally the way the process works, is that we look to the chairman of the committee. This is, this is under the established board policy that may be worth revisiting at some point.
I'm, I'm being told that they have discussed it a number of times, wondering why they, why our board has not acted.
Well, our board has not received any paperwork or any staff work on this. Typically, when a com, when a talent bank application gets filled out, it gets looked at by staff to determine whether or not there's any potential vacancy for that appointment. I'm notified. And then I, I typically interview as many people as I can.
Okay.
For every assignment. If there's a new phase, someone that we want to encourage, I'm particularly looking for, for folks to fill, because we do have committee slots open.
Well, I think we need to look into why we haven't had a recommendation, because I know that there's a name in.
I'm just telling you, nothing comes to me.
Okay.
Generally what happens.
At this point, I know that there's a name in.
There should be a public holder that we have access to so we can see. I complained the entire time when I was the appointments chair that I had somebody in front of me, I had too many people of this position, I had no idea what was open in other committees and who, what else we had. And it would be really nice as the appointments chair to be able to see all the applications. You're given a piece of it, that's the problem.
Right. I understand.
All right, well, the enterprise, the enterprise committee, this particular person is complaining that a slot has not been filled, so.
I would be more, I'd be more than happy to follow up on that individual complaint.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
For the record, would it be helpful for me just to read the names of the individuals on this? Are you okay?
Thanks for being done.
Very good.
Oh. Would you like to read them into the rec?
Yeah, the.
Yes, go ahead.
The, yeah, just to read into the record and for the, for the few people that still may be watching from home. Jeff Colby, the DPW director, Eric Tolly, we made a decision to enable him to be on this committee. Brian Gardner, the FinCom rep, Judy Tarver, the capital budget committee rep, Kurt Sears from the capital budget committee, Joe Rodericks, Yarmouth resident but former DPW or town engineer in Dennis, Mark Galkowski served on the prior DPW committee, Sharon Weemer and Thomas Griffiths. Thomas Griffiths was in charge of construction for the city of Boston Police Department. So we've got a very talented group and I appreciate your support in appointing these individuals. So that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. All right, any individual items? We'll skip back to agenda review. I'm not going to spend any time on this unless there were specific questions.
I would just bring your attention, the October 25th Joint Board of Selectmen, FinCom and Water Resources Advisory Committee to be held at the Dennis Senior Center, I believe it's 6:00 PM, meeting time, location, for representatives of the Mansfield, Foxborough and Norton group will be there in attendance.